I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, June 6th. If we would have the roll call, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Here.
Councilmember Schickling?
Here.
Mayor Protan Ponse?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here. If we would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. And if we could please have a few moments of silence for Nancy Hamilton and Sandra Rivera Jimenez. Please be seated. Closed session, item?
Yeah, we have one closed session. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation under Government Code 549-56.9. One case.
They'll be back.
No report of action?
And for the record, we want to say Scott is in the house. Scott can't move his hands. Okay. Announcement to written communications? None? Okay, department head reports?
Good evening, Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. Got five items tonight. The Green Pier Harbor Master Office painting started today. So if you go out the end of the pier, you'll see that we've got the barricades around the beer building there and the contractor has a work zone and we're working with the businesses. So everybody's happy and stays open and lots of people at the end of the pier still. So it seems to be functioning well. So the scope of that work is really to prep the building. So washing, scraping, sanding, filling, and then we'll put an oil primer base coat on that. And then also there'll be carpentry work by Peter Jones. He's the general contractor and we got Bill Durst, a Different Strokes painting from the mainland is the painting contractor. Work scheduled to be completed by June 23rd. And that's possible because we've got six workers working on the building right now in that work zone. So looks like, you know, we'll have a nice bright shiny green, green pair of paint on that building here within the next few weeks. And the next project to be bid this summer and completed this fall will be the roof of that building. So that building was getting some love lately. 206 East Whitley, we've got a phase of the project that is advertised for bid as of yesterday. The project will rehabilitate the existing retaining wall and then prep the site for a possible second structure. It'll also do improvements to the frontage improvements on East Whitley so that no matter what the decision we make with whatever building, that we have additional parking and that there's road improvements in that curve. Where the city crews have started getting caught up on the pothole repairs as of yesterday. And so we started on Pebbley Beach Road and that work will continue until we're completed on all the city streets. Fuel float, the fuel float was placed in the water yesterday and it'll be set up tomorrow at the fuel dock and then the ramp will be installed during favorable ties on Thursday. The last step will be to connect it to the fuel system using a mainland contractor within the next few days after that. And then also public crews have unscheduled start work on the replacement of stop signs where they're faded. So we'll get some new bright stop signs where needed and then also freshening up all the pavement markings in town. So you'll start seeing that roll out. And we usually do that early in the morning before everybody's out.
Those guys are, they're all so busy, man. So somebody said to me, Scott, you said, because we were talking about replacing the planks on the pier?
Yes.
And so they said, why don't you just turn them over because the other side isn't worn? I'm just putting it out there.
And that may be an option that we explore.
Okay.
Yeah, and we'll see how that works out. But yeah, we are.
They could be worn by the ocean.
Well, I don't know. It was just a thought and just a thought. So if you're just kind of.
So you'll see a whole array of alternatives when we, that project's in the budget.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, it'll move, you know, forward and we're looking for grant funds also to help with that.
Yeah.
So you'll see first the engineering getting going on that and then the project documents. We'll be talking to our funding partners and see if we can, because Department of Butter and Waterways, when they came out to the island to bless the fuel, the pump out float, you know, as we put that in the water, they said, you know, there's additional funding for a lot of things you're doing. And so we said, we're interested. So we'll pursue those.
Okay, great. Any questions, Bob?
I have one and I don't want to throw Jamie under the bus. But I emailed him about a pothole, a pretty decent sized pothole that's, as you're going, as you're leaving town and going out towards Pebbley Beach, right after the gate, there's a pretty significant pothole right there and a lot of people.
That was fixed yesterday.
Oh my God, yay!
Isn't that great news? You ask and it's already done.
Well, I went out, I went out there like, I went out there like the day before yesterday. So I was like, oh dang, it's still not fixed. Well, yay, thanks Jamie, you're out from under the bus.
And about the little white circles, I had fun driving out Pebbley Beach Road Sunday night with all the white circles. It's like, okay. You knew where all the holes were, so yeah, that was cool.
Okay, thank you.
Then can I ask you a favor too?
Yes.
Just right on Crescent Street, it was when you were first doing the pier and you had all of this stuff there, all the machinery and the lay down and all that kind of stuff.
Yes.
Somebody noticed that the trash cans, the brown side by side trash cans, there's a plaque on the serpentine wall that's commemorating.
I know who you're talking about.
Ocean Flight.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so he just approached me the other day and he goes, they still haven't moved that. And he goes, it's a very significant thing.
Yeah, I'll personally make sure to have them tomorrow.
Thanks, Bob.
As I go out to the Green Pier. Okay.
Thank you very much.
I was just gonna say thanks too for the repainting of the, all the planters throughout town are looking really great. So thanks for also adding that to the list of things.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, good evening, Adam Mayor, Member of City Council. You can probably tell, Orin's not here, he's off island until the end of the week, so you're stuck with me tonight. I was kind of dowsy with some statistics, but I'll wait to get to those. First off, just want to mention what Bob was talking about, the painting project, the pier, super thrilled about that, that got going today. In fact, I just left and contractors down there working right now. So Bob's been helping me out, trying to make sure we mitigate any issues out there with businesses and things like that, make sure things goes, run smoothly out there. Memorial Weekend was pretty quiet in terms of, you know, calls out there. The gray weather probably had a lot to do with that, so that was nice. In terms of, also Memorial Weekend, the Yacht Club had their, I believe it's their 99th season grand opening or opening ceremonies for that. In terms of numbers, month of May, we had 1,046 boats moored. They stayed with us for a total of 3,804 nights. It's down a little bit from last May, but we can blame that on the weather as well. Little factoid you can douse your friends with is the average high temperature for May was 61 degrees according to our records, which is about the lowest we've had since 97. So we're gonna blame Mother Nature for that. On a brighter note though, this past weekend, Wine Mixer Weekend, we were up about 5% in terms of number of boats, so there is a light there, I guess, can see that one. A bunch of other statistics, we had 233 security checks, including cruise ship patrols, port patrols, 83 public assists, including boating and medical calls. As Bob mentioned, the fuel dock's back in the water, so that'll be, installation process will start on Thursday for that. So right now, we're really busy getting our patrol boats ready for season, infrastructure, things like that, working on the mole, getting ready for a busy summer season.
I went to the career fair yesterday up at the school and I, I corralled some young women that were 15 and older and I was talking up the sanitation worker jobs. So you let me know if any of these girls apply.
It's funny you mention that. We just went through a hiring cycle and we had quite a few applicants. So we made some decisions, we're still working on those. So we just completed it actually yesterday, so.
Oh, so, but will you need more?
So that's an open application.
Oh, okay.
They can apply, put their application in and do that.
Oh, good, I'm glad you're finding them this year.
Thanks for doing that, because every little bit helps with that.
Yeah, okay, great. All right.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Staff, Michael Allegria, Fire Chief. Code enforcement, the month of May issued 250 citations plus a bunch of warning citations, some red tags, and a lot of verbal warnings for multiple things. Animal noise, illegal dumping, they caught a couple people, so they've been very busy with that. Lot of calls for service with animal, with animals, they took a couple reports, picked up a dead, a bunch of dead animals, helped Marine Rescue with the animals, they've been really busy with that. They have one dog right now at the shelter. They're working with me to start getting letters out for weed abatement with the late start of the, with the late rain, kind of waiting. So now people are doing them, but we're gonna go out and issue the warnings this next, this week and get people caught up on weed abatement around town. They've also visiting the restaurants one last time for the commercial green bags, because we're gonna start working on that again this summer. And as far as fire, fire had 80 medical calls in May, 95 total calls, so only 15 fire-related fire alarms, stuff like that. Right now, we have a crew of three from the mainland, from LA County, doing a driver, operator, state certified class for all of my drivers. So we had the personnel that come over and cover for LA County, we have a handful of them, and then a couple county fire employees, my six guys, and a couple other call firefighters from the county. So it's a 40-hour class. They were in here yesterday, all the fun classroom stuff. Today, they're at Middle Ranch, setting up the big pumpkins, pumping water, doing all the fun stuff, doing some four by four driving in the county vehicles and patrols. So they're getting, and then they finish up in town tomorrow. So if you, that's why you see a couple extra fire things going around town.
How many calls do you have on Saturday, medical calls on Saturday?
On Saturday, total, we had 18.
Wow.
18 calls, that included a couple of fire calls.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
I heard lots of sirens.
Lots of sirens on Saturday, yeah. Do we have questions of our chief?
We were gonna do a sidewalk CPR thing on the stage today, but with the limited crew, we got calls at the absolute worst time. So we'll probably do it next Tuesday down on the stage for the cruise ship people.
Oh, excellent.
And tomorrow, we're doing it at the school for a couple PE classes.
Great, okay. Any, are we good? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and City Staff. Since our last meeting, we had 170 observations made by the deputies as far as different various calls, traffic stops and pedestrian stops, that kind of thing. We had 83 calls for service responded to. We made 12 arrests. There were two felony assault calls that we rested on. We had one for felony vandalism. There was one for drunk in public. There were three for DUI and two for domestic violence and two additional for unlicensed drivers. We're ramping up for the summer and we've been surprised how cool it's been, but it's kind of just a break before it really starts to warm up. So we're getting ready for Pride Weekend, gonna have myself and some other deputies actually out there the entire time and we're communicating with the group together and we don't see any real issues as far as that's concerned. Fourth of July, we're gonna have our entire staff working all day in those hours, so no one will have the day off and as well as we're gonna be hiring, we should be up to six reserves coming over, so we'll have quite a bit of staff out there on the fourth. I think we're prepared for that. We've been meeting with, during the time, it's been with the juniors and seniors of the high school, we've been going over there and talking to them and trying to get them aware of, you know, the issues with, some of the issues we're having with fighting going on in the city with the juveniles as well as the drinking and driving. So that's, you know, that's kind of uphill battle to get them to listen, but I think it's getting through to some of them. So it's been, it's been nice to talk to them and we're finally going again this week and monitoring the graduation parties this weekend and next weekend. So I think we're prepared for that and hopefully that doesn't result in anyone going to jail.
Question, on the, on the event at Descanso, did they hire their private security or did they hire some of the sheriffs, do you know?
They have a pretty good security staff that works there. There's a large group, it's approximately eight to 10 people that are out there working and they hired two of my deputies to work. So we had two deputies on 10 hours and their job was just to be there on scene and kind of help out with the process. And on that day, we did have one arrest, it was for the drunk in public that I talked about earlier and that's all we had.
Okay, right, any questions of the captain? Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Matt Baker, Finance Director. I'll be presenting the budget, but I wanted to touch on a few revenue items right now. Right now, I estimate April's TOT revenues to be down about 25%. Again, that's 25% from a pretty strong April of last year. If May and June were to be down similarly, that would put TOT somewhere between 7.8 and 7.9 million. Again, we budgeted 5.7 million, so we're considerably above where we had budgeted. But last year, TOT was 8.7 million, so it is down a fair bit from last year. But luckily, we really weren't counting on those revenues, and so that's just helped build up our reserves. So just also to kinda put it to scale in the budget, we do have 7 million as the estimate for TOT revenues for next year, so that's about 20% below that peak we saw in fiscal year '22. Similarly, cross-channel revenues, cross-channel warfare was down 20% in April. But if it's down similar in May and June, we should be in line with our budget estimate. Again, last year, we set the budget down about 10% from that peak in '22, and we had a strong first half of the year, which has helped us out. For May, nightly moorings were down 6%, so, you know, some optimism that maybe May won't be as down as April was as far as revenue, but we shall see. You know, not great news, but the nice thing is, we did have a strong half of the year, first half of the year, and we really didn't budget to match those highs we saw in fiscal year '22. So from a budget standpoint, we're in good shape. So, not great news, but, you know, luckily, we kind of anticipated and built a budget that would allow for a bad spring, but no one's looking forward to the sun more than me, I think, so. Unless there's questions, I'll be touching on the budget later.
Good, thank you, Matt.
Good evening, Council, Madam Mayor. May 29th, Memorial Day, tribute was a great event collaborated between the VFW and the city. Our Public Works Crew did a great job having the cemetery looking beautiful for that day for those who came to honor, those who gave their lives, so we can continue to stay free. Cal Parsons gave a moving speech reminding us of the two people who were buried in the cemetery, who had died in battle, one he had served with. It was really nice to see our own VFW create such an event for us to commemorate, so a big shout out to the VFW. We have graduating class of 2013, their banners are up, we put those up today, so they're up on our streetlights, and we'd like to thank SCE for allowing us to, and allowing our graduates to be recognized throughout town, and so for, also for our visitors to come see our kids who are graduating as well. Graduation will be next Thursday at 4:00 PM at the Casino Ballroom, for those who would like to go and attend. This Sunday, we will, there will be a dog parade. There is a group that is trying to raise funds for dogs with medical needs, and so they will be going at 8:00 AM. They will be going from the mole through Front Street, then back up over Sumner, and then over back towards Machine Gun Park, where they will have raffles there, food there. It'll be a little event for, and fundraiser for dogs with medical needs. Even though this has been overcast, summer is here, and the Recreation Department is ready to create the fund for the community every day, starting June 18th. On Mondays, we will be having our Beach Fund Days from 11:00 to 3:00 PM out on South Beach. That's where we'll have things where people will get to swim with mermaids, do kayak tours, and games, and so... And then Tuesday, we will have our traditional Beach Bingo, 6:00 PM on South Beach. Wednesday, we will have our fishing derbies in the morning, Wednesday movie nights, and we will have them every Wednesday, not just one day a week. These will be events that will be happening every day throughout the summer. We wanted to provide something fun and memorable for everybody who comes, so they don't have to try to catch a day, there will always be something for them to do. Thursday will also be Beach Bingo on South Beach. We will have Fitness Fridays, 9:00 AM to noon at Kids Park. This is where we'll have like Zumba classes, fitness boxing, we'll teach people how to utilize our fitness park over here. And Saturday will be Art in the Park, here at Kids Park, where we'll have art projects, where we'll have people who will teach people how to do some of these art projects. And one of the things, we're trying to find somebody right now to help kinda teach that recyclable art as well, so you can take things around your house that you usually throw away and make your own little art projects. And then Sunday will be Wellness Day from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and that will be on South Beach, and that's where we'll have yoga. All these events will be absolutely free for everybody who wishes to participate. We're able to give these events for free, thanks to funding from the Yacht Club and the Lions, and the Lions Club, so I really wanna give a big shout out to them as well. That, it will create over 72 events over the summer that people can participate in. Other recreation programs that are in progress or starting right now, we have our summer session of our karate classes start up again this week. T-ball is on Monday nights, men's summer league basketball is on Mondays and Wednesday nights, men's footsole league will be on Tuesday nights. Programs run by other entities, but which use our facilities, is Sundays and Wednesdays is Avalon Kids Baseball, co-ed softball on Thursdays. So there's always something to do or go watch all summer long, including day camp. Day camp starts June 19th, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM for kids ages 6 to 12 years old. The fee is only $19 a day, or $78 for the week, essentially getting one day for free. Signups are open online at thecityofavalon.com website. You just go to the Community Service and just click through. Going online is also a great way to keep up with everything that we're doing here at the city. If you wanna know about what we're doing in community services, or what our Public Works Crew is doing, or what the Council has voted on, you can go to cityofavalon.com, it's a great site. Big shout out to Devin Hart for keeping that up. Starting tomorrow, you can also preorder your Tony Zyliss Fourth of July Grand Marshall shirts, all online. Same thing, go to the Community Service Department and follow through. They're only $25, and our proceeds will go to the Fourth of July event. Do you guys have any question for me?
No, any question? Boy, I'm really excited about all the things you're adding in the summertime.
So are we.
That is excellent.
Dave, how many kids are graduating this year?
34, 34.
And it's in the ballroom or in the theater?
Theater.
Oh, excuse me, in the theater.
Okay, so I was like, what, the ballroom? Okay, and then what time is the Art in the Park on Saturdays?
Art in the Park on Saturdays is from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Okay, thanks.
There's a really great flyer on the Recreation Department's Facebook page right now. If you wanna grab that and screenshot it, I've put it as my background for during the day when the kids are here, so.
Oh, nice.
But that way you know when stuff is happening and can send it to people and stuff too, so. It's really encouraging to see not only how much you guys are doing, but also how much all of your team is talking up all of the activities throughout town. I think I've had almost every member of your team approach me at some point and talk about one of the different things happening or ask questions, and it's good kudos to you to keep all of this stuff both going and create new things as well, so.
I've got a really good team.
You have a really good team right now, yeah.
And the fundraiser for the dog, it's for Leslie's dog Zoe, who needs to have some serious operation. So what she wants to do, Cheryl that's setting it up, is just kinda keep that going, just as we have the curmazes for people, she says, you know, we need to take care of our pets, so it's the Catalina Dog Mixer, what it's called. I don't believe they're going to need to have law enforcement there. I think, I don't think any alcohol will be served to pets or their owners, so, anyway. Thank you, that's, that's a lot of good stuff.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, Mayor and City Council. As I mentioned at the last council meeting, the Publey Beach landfill will be at capacity by roughly July 2027. From the last council meeting, I have some updates. Last Friday, Jamie and Jeffrey and I met with Carmelo, the Operations Manager at the Publey Beach landfill. We received a tour of the facilities and received better insights on the CRNR operations perspective. Essentially, items placed in landfill containers are baled and taken to our local landfill. Items that are placed in recycling containers are baled and transported to the mainland to be sorted and processed from there. Green waste and food waste is chipped and composted in an area designated in the Publey Beach landfill. And so we need to improve our diversion efforts. CRNR haulers are starting to not collect, or they are not collecting trash on recycling days, recycling on trash days, and so our community needs to be aware of that. You may have seen blue tags coming up on different receptacles when they see that things are cross-contaminated or they're put out on the wrong day. Related, CRNR's Sustainability Team, which will be roughly five people, plus Julie, are contacting CRNR. They're gonna be here the week of June 19th, and they're going to be walking door-to-door to all of our businesses and our residents to let them know about, you know, these things that I mentioned, recycling, green waste, and organics. And then in the month of July, CRNR expects to receive a shipment of dumpsters and containers that will be able to be distributed amongst our downtown and business district, as well as multifamily dwelling units, which I think I mentioned at the last council meeting. And so we're looking forward to that, that should help with collection and diversion efforts from our real landfill. And then at the next city council meeting, I'll be coming to recommend approval of a word of contract to a vendor who did a presentation in January to start the, to kick off the project essentially, to start doing the technical studies, start with the permitting process and the environmental reviews and CEQA. And that concludes my presentation.
Does the implementation of the residential and commercial district waste receptacles include us looking at our trash cans that we have throughout town, the brown double trash cans that we currently have?
Yeah, so we do have a CalRecycle grant, two of them actually, one for recycling and one for organics. So we just asked for a modification to the grant programming to help purchase some of those organic containers for, you know, Front Street and the pier, and other places where there's a lot of food waste. So we'll be ordering those shortly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Justin, sorry, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Do you know, or I don't know if you already have a plan, or if you could plan with them for the visit on June 19th, to stop by the apartment complexes as well?
Yeah.
Because it's all just dumpsters, there's no individual trash cans, so we wouldn't even know who to tag if we needed to?
Yeah, yeah, for sure, they're gonna hit up, I gave them a list of everybody that has a business license in the community, so they'll be going to each business, including our multifamily dwelling units. And the state of California allows CRNR to give 30-day notice to the apartment building or condo complex, and they've got 30 days to contact CRNR to let them know what their needs are as far as those three waste streams. If CRNR doesn't hear back within 30 days, then they'll do it for them. They'll provide what they think that the condo needs or the apartment complex needs. So everybody should be able to have three different options, you know, waste recycling and organics, so.
Thank you.
When we first embarked on this journey, we had some sort of a plan for a community bins. We were talking about placement and maybe over by the plaza, by Pete's and all that stuff. Did that get scrapped, is that gonna happen?
They're gonna go up here at City Hall.
Oh.
In the back, we couldn't work out a deal downtown that we talked about.
You're exactly right, so because of that, we're gonna have them placed here.
Okay, yeah, it would interfere with their arm.
Yeah, yeah.
Oops, sorry. But also, CRNR, you talk a really, really good game, but Tuesday is my trash pickup day, and I went, and my little organics pail was full, so even though it wasn't Friday, they picked those up on Friday. I put it out because, you know, it starts to smell in your kitchen, because there's no community place to dump it, but.
You can take it to Vons in front of John.
I do do that to Vons, and I told Brian I do that. But anyway, I went out there this afternoon to throw something away, and they had taken everything, the recyclables, the trash, the organic. They do that on a regular basis, so.
So we created an email distribution list, it's recycle@cityofavalon.com. So I suggest if you have observations like that, dates are helpful, then I can share that with CRNR to make sure there's a course correction with the haulers.
Okay.
Can you repeat the email?
Recycle@cityofavalon.com.
And would that also work for people that may see their neighbors not properly separating their trash?
Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna get all those emails, as is a couple other people on the city team, because I think that will be super helpful. I get a lot of anecdotal information, and it's hard to hold, you know, CRNR accountable when I don't have that specific information, so.
That would be great, that would be really great. And to go one step further, may I request that that go on the, how do I report a concern?
Sure.
And put the recycle there?
Yeah.
So it would be a lot easier for people to find, and, yeah.
Absolutely.
All right, I think that's a good attack, I like that.
Thank you, Justin.
And I know we had spoken last Tuesday. It just, I'm hoping they're gonna bring us different configuration of dumpster for the multi-unit, because today, yesterday was trash day for us, so the big one got dumped. Recycle is on Thursday, but they give us just a regular big, and it's already full.
Yes.
But it, and it's mainly full because residents haven't been educated enough to not use plastic bags. So, and I'm not gonna go through other people's trash, but I went to go throw my stuff in there, and it's all in a big plastic bag. And just to, and just an information to the community, it's really easy to break down your boxes. Just break down your boxes, don't just stack them up.
Here, here.
It just, you know, I go down, I break all my boxes, and I take them down, I leave them on the side, and I'll get down there, like right now, there's a pile of, people have just dropped their boxes, so. We, yeah, we really do, we really do need to work on the education to the community, so it just.
Yeah, it's good for our environment, but it's also critical for this project that we're doing. We're limited timeline for sure, so, yeah.
I still think you may hear quite a bit of pushback on the door-to-door on the number of pickups and not having two pickups for both all the time. And seeing, especially as more people come back into town for summer and residences that sometimes only have one person in one apartment using a full trash space, but they're, you know, duplexes or triplexes, seeing how those have been impacted just on our street alone in the past couple of weeks as more people are coming back for the summer season. I think that's gonna continue to be an issue. I don't know if it makes sense for us to preemptively have the discussion of if we were to have two sets of trash pickup each of those two days, what would that cost look like? Is that something we can do? Is that something we should be looking at? I think it's the biggest issue beside, right now that we're seeing, and that's why they're picking up still every day for both sets, because there's enough trash there to pick up. If they don't pick it up, it's gonna be overflowing the next time they go to pick it up.
Yeah, for sure, I think there's a lot of, I think there's a lot of recycling in the trash too. Like, I think there's a lot of, just coming from Monterey County, the standard, you know, was a standard 32-gallon naturally that you would get for your trash? And then it was a larger 64-gallon for recycling. So that was the hint, like, you should be recycling a lot more and throwing away a lot less.
Yeah.
So I think that's why the public outreach aspect of it is super important. And the last thing is CRNR is gonna have a booth and a presence during the Fourth of July celebration. So hopefully, we'll be able to hit up a lot of people, visitors that regularly come to our community businesses and, and of course, residents to help with this education effort, so.
Great.
Yeah.
And then just one final thought, sorry. Julie, when she, the last time she was here, she was explaining what was recyclable and what's not. And there's a lot of things that are considered recyclable OT. And there's a lot of things that are considered recyclable OT, but not here, because our facility can't do it, or whatever, like that, right? And then, packaging has come a long way, and they have the little thing on it, and it says, okay, recyclable if clean, and, you know, that kind of stuff. But some of the older stuff just has the triangles with the 1, 2, 3, 4, 7. Would it be possible to get an explanation of what those means, and what, which of those numbers can be accepted at our facility? Because I saw, because I'm one of those people that's very anal, and I'm like, do this?
But if I'm hearing her correctly, if you throw, whether it's a 1, a 7, or a 10, they all go over town, and they sort them.
Oh, okay.
So, our big thing is just.
Our thing is sorting it and getting, get in the bin, and then they'll go through and do the final.
Oh, so just throw everything in?
All recycle, all into the, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, all plastics, all plastics, you know, aluminum, glass.
Where did I get the idea that Julie was saying not to?
There, I think there's some things where I thought they were recyclable that... There's some things that I thought were recyclable that are not, and based on the label on the back is where it falls in, so certain things where they're plastics, but they're not plastics that are recyclable, they're trash plastic, basically, right? So, that stuff would go into the trash stream, it stays here, it goes into the landfill.
Okay.
But anything that is marked as actually recyclable is then able to be put into the recyclable container and shipped over town, sorted there, and handled there.
Okay. And I also asked Brian at Vons if he would start stocking more compostable bags of various sizes, you know, the small ones for like your bathroom, or whatever.
Does he even have them now? I had to get them, your mom had to order them for me.
I ordered them from Amazon.
Yeah. Hopefully, he will, or we can all kind of, and Julie, I know, is gonna talk to him about that as well, I think.
And another, another concern is large items being left all over. Are they picking up? Are they, what are they?
So, for, for residents, just a general public announcement, there are three free pickup days that everybody gets, and you can leave up to two, I believe, large, or bulk items, is what they call it. And so, it's just a matter of calling CRNR and letting them know, hey, I'm gonna put my washer and dryer out there, or my cabinet, or whatever.
But then, it sits out there for weeks and weeks?
I think we tag them, don't we?
You have to call them.
No, if you call them, you make an appointment.
Oh, I know, but I think code enforcement, if they, because if they're too lazy to call, code enforcement, I think, puts a tag on them, and tells them.
But it's a big issue up at Euclidus, in that, and I, I can't say it's just the residents just dumping their stuff outside the bins?
Right.
But it piles up, and then the complex has to have them come and pick it all up.
Oh.
But.
People.
But what, what was really nice is years ago, when they did the large item pickup, twice a year, you were able to put something out, and it got picked up. And it was all, it was, there was two days in a week, or a few days in a week?
Yeah.
And they did all of town with large item pickups.
Yeah.
You didn't have to call, they just, you, these are the days that they're gonna be on your street. You could, there was a time you could put it out, you couldn't put it out any earlier, but, but, yeah, I, the, calling them and asking, because you try to call them, and you, you can't get through, it's gonna take forever. I would love to see them go back to doing the community-wide large item pickup.
Yeah, I can certainly talk to CRNR about that.
But, but the managers of all of these multi, they have a responsibility to get that information out, and I don't think, I don't know how well that happens, but, I mean, I know they send their people notices.
We have notices posted in our laundry rooms about large item pickups.
You do?
That you have to call. But that, but I'm, what I'm saying is that, I'm not saying it's just the people that live there.
Right.
People are just dumping.
Right, people know there's a spot.
But it's a good spot, because nobody's gonna know it was this.
Businesses, yeah.
And the scavengers would love to have the twice-a-year, that was, that was Flip's favorite thing.
Okay, thank you, Jocelyn. And, and on that note, Dave Hart, when you start, perhaps something you might wanna add to Day Camp is get some of those recyclable bins and those things, and really, because those kids are gonna be bringing their lunches, and really try to indoctrinate them.
Oh, good idea.
So, they go home and, yeah.
Anyway.
Okay. So, we, city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just wanna report, since our last council meeting, part of our participation with Sarah is that they send one of their risk control advisors over to the city. He was over here for two days. In May, Thor Benzinger, he provided a full risk assessment for all city departments, went through the harbor, went through Public Works, City Hall, Fire Department. Highlighted every area of possible risk, every area that we're doing well, gave a, gave two separate seminars the next morning, Friday morning, to both Public Works, Fire, Code Enforcement regarding heat management, we might be able to use that someday, and traffic control, which is always risky out here because of the narrowness of the streets. He has provided feedback since then regarding additional training that we have, so we really appreciate that. We're gonna definitely incorporate much of what he has provided, what, provided us. I also had an opportunity, switching gears, to meet with Sagecrest to discuss options to amend our short-term rental regulations. There's been a number of conversations that have both with Council and Planning Commission residents concerning what we can do to get a better, maybe a better view on what we have on the books as far as enforcement, and add some things that we don't currently have. So, they're preparing, they've reviewed Palm Springs, Big Bear Lake, and Newport Beach, which they feel have similar situations to us. They're presenting that, some options to Planning Commission in June, at the June meeting. Depending on what Planning Commission likes, doesn't like, hopefully, we can then have something in place to get the Council for their review shortly thereafter. Wanna remind everybody, it is graduation season, so it's graduation party season in Tremont Hall. Our requirement is that the music be inside Tremont Hall, and please be conscientious of how loud the music is during the parties. We, we understand, appreciate, everybody has to have their party, but that area up there, we received a number of preemptive complaints, just knowing that these parties are coming along.
I don't know how the lower neighbors handle it, because they're right below it. I know how I handle it up here. It was, it's good that the last few things up at Tremont, it's, the weather's been nice, that I could close the windows and the doors, not, but when it starts getting warm.
You break out your dancing shoes for an in-home dance party?
Well, the thing is, the thing is that some of the music is really good.
Yeah, it is.
Some of the music is not so good, so, yeah.
So, and just thanks to the sheriff, they've been going up there and reminding them also.
And I, and I appreciate, when I saw that in the update, I thought that was really nice, so.
Yeah. So, we've been trying to keep that under control. And I also wanna mention, you know, one of the, another issue regarding short-term rentals is somebody had commented that the sheriffs are never going up through Hamilton Cove. They don't get up there, they don't patrol up there. Brought that up a couple weeks ago. Since then, every shift that the sheriff has run, they've circled up through Hamilton Cove, they've gone through there, they're doing it, you know, at least three times a day each shift, monitoring that situation, so.
Do they get stopped at the gate?
They, I don't know, do they get through? They probably, they probably get through. So, so that's, you know, we've made some changes, appreciate everybody helping out. Finally, one last item, I don't think Bob mentioned it, but the traffic consultants are gonna be on the island next week. We're talking, particularly, Bob has his own issues that he's talking with them about specifically, but we're gonna talk about some new public transportation options we're considering, and then also options for certain intersections, the main one that we all talk about down there, at the intersection, you know, by Pancake Cottage and the, and the donut shop. So, we'll get some, get their eyes on it, they'll be here, we'll have some time to talk, and hopefully, we'll come up with some new suggestions for Council.
When are they coming?
It's next week sometime, I think they're gonna be on a couple days next week.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, next week. That's all I have.
City Attorney?
Just a quick note, that we're continuing to work with LAVCO on the sphere of influence and scope of city operations, and Paul Nowak, who was here two months ago, has been very complimentary about Jocelyn and the reports that she's been given, and the cooperation that LAVCO's gotten from city, and they said it's actually the most cooperation they've gotten from any city in the last couple of years. They're very, very pleased with, with the process so far, which bodes well for us, if we wanna ask them.
Excellent. Okay. Council member reports?
Can I go first?
Sure.
Just one, community cleanup this Saturday, June 10th, at 9 o'clock, meet at Avalon's Kids Park, and this is being presented with the Avalon Rotary, Ocean Mimic, and Care for Catalina. The last two have been well-attended, and they have gotten quite a bit of trash, only to go back a week later and find the same amount of trash back there, so. That's a call to arms to come and help clean up, and a request that you not re-trash it.
Re-trash, okay.
I can go next. I do have a couple items, since I was not here at the last council meeting, and my daughter decided to also take notes above my notes, so bear with me. So, the beginning of this month, we completed our Road to Home Ownership workshops, so thank you to Loriann at the US Bank and her staff, as well as Mark Phelps, definitely excited to work with them in the future. But they are also hosting another seminar, which is called Business Owner and Property Purchasing Seminar, and it's being held June 14th, but you do have to RSVP for this one, since it will be held at the Metropole Beach House, so it's limited spacing. And I'm sure you can do that at the bank with them. And I also attended Contract Cities Legislative Meeting, and right after that, I attended their annual seminar in Indian Wells. It's always a pleasure to see everyone up there, and you think you meet a lot of people one seminar, and the next, you just meet a whole set of other people. It's amazing, I love it. It's one of my favorites. And in that seminar, one of the things that stood out to me, and I did think of our chief, Mikey Allegria, one of the seminars was held by Beverly Hills Fire Chief, his name is Greg Barton, I hope I said that correctly, but he covered the LA County Fire Hazard Reduction Programs, one of them being the defensible space inspection, which establishes the Zone Zero, AB 38, and they explained all those fire severity zones, but what I appreciated was a couple of things they mentioned, I already remembered that we've covered in a couple of our agenda items, so thank you, Fire Chief Mikey. Fuck, I was ahead of the game. Thanks to you. So, and it's good to know that our city is covered, and you're on top of it, so thank you. And one last meeting I attended was the Avalon Child Development Center informational night, and I saw Annie there, but I think she was there for the job affair.
I was there for the, for the first hour, yes.
Okay, so, the part I attended was, our school is trying to start to open their own preschool program, so that does not include the TK, that is for younger kids. They're in the process of still constructing and trying to get permits, but they do wanna get the word out now, so whoever does wanna use the program, starts enrolling and meeting whatever criteria they need. So, if you do wanna do that, just go ahead and visit the school main office, and look for Mira Okapo. She can sign you up, put your email down, so you can get the updates, because they don't have like an exact start date just yet, but I know we're all in dire need of childcare, so, and it's gonna be a great program. So, you can put your email down, and you can also start getting started on the requirement, so she'll give you a packet. Oh, and then, for Bob, I saw you guys outside my window working this morning, so good job to your group.
Okay. Mary?
Oh, well, selfish me was on vacation last week, so I didn't do a lot of council stuff. But speaking of trash, I wanna give a shout-out to Linda Salo. Linda Salo, as everybody knows, she walks everywhere, she hikes everywhere, and all that stuff, and it breaks her heart every time. She's constantly sending me pictures of, look at, up here by Mount Ada, look at up here by the top of the zip line, didn't, just, it's like constantly. And she does pick up a lot of trash herself, but she just constantly sends me text messages and stuff like that, so. A shout-out to Linda for being a, a good citizen and keeping an eye out, and, you know, voicing her concern, and hopefully, we can get a handle on this somehow. I think it just comes down to respect and pride, and all of that, and I don't know why we can't get on top of this. But, and that's the same, the dumpsters with your large items and stuff, I mean, people just, I don't want it, boom. So, anyway, off my soapbox, bye.
I attended the Broadband for All Seminar that was in Santa Ana a couple of weeks ago, had the chance to meet with both federal, state, and LA County, and Orange County representatives on a variety of the upcoming grant topics. Was both equally beneficial in learning about a couple of new opportunities that are gonna be opening up soon, and also slightly frustrating in being left off the map from the largest initiative that's taking place in the state of California, but had one of the people in the room from Caltrans, and from the team that was working with Golden State Network, and asked the question of whether or not there was any funding left, and was told flat out, absolutely not, for this round, and that this was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for funding. So, with that in mind, I'd like the Council to consider and discuss potentially with Scott and Dave, looking at forming a JPA to be able to go after funding. The majority of grants that are currently open have to be applied for by an entity like a city government, they can't usually be applied for by a private company. In doing that, we would be able to loop in a number of entities that are already working here, and also entities that are on the mainland, including cellular providers, to provide funding potentially for under C fiber. I think this might be the next move, so I'd like to see if we can either have it on as an agenda item for discussion, or what direction would be needed for that, and if there's any examples throughout California that are already taking place for that. I don't know. There's a couple of cities I've heard of that have worked towards projects like that, but not to the size and scope that we would need for this project. There is also one funding opportunity coming up, that one of the private entities has asked us to do a letter of support, at the very least, for the community project funding through the USDA, which is different than the other USDA rounds that have gone through for one of the businesses here. And so, we'll catch up with you guys on that this week, to see if we can have that written at the very least, but it's, a lot of the things that we're wanting to move forward on still can't be built unless that underground and full infrastructure is reliable all the time, or at least most of the time. And it's been frustrating this week, and with every, with the level of people in town coming up, it's been a lot more difficult to have the internet work the way it's supposed to this week, so. Also, we'll be attending Gateway Cities tomorrow in Paramount, and so we'll report back on that. And I'm excited about graduation. My, Kinsley's graduating, and a lot of family friends are coming out for it, so you may see some of the Monroe's running around town. Just let them run around, they're having fun. That's all I got.
Okay, great. Not much to report. I did attend the career day, it was very poorly attended by the students, as well as the businesses, in my mind.
Was it Taste Round Night? Wasn't that what it was?
There was other things going on, but, yeah. I mean, the kids were mandated to go, and they would get credit, but still, some of them, they were, I caught them running up, and they go, yeah, we're running, because we have to do this, and we have to fill out this little card, and, anyway. But, so, anyway, maybe next year it'll be a little bit bigger. I was gone, went to Banning and was quite lucky in Morongo, so I was happy to do that, the first time I ever won any money. And I'm gonna be going to Texas on Thursday, I'll be gone for a week, visiting my daughter in San Antonio, but I can, I can, they can find me on my phone. And I attended SCAG online, and there's really nothing to report from Southern California Association of Governments at this point, sorry to say. So, that's it, okay. Michael, you wanted to do something right now?
Yes, I'm gonna do it from here, and then I'm gonna give it to Jim.
Okay.
A proclamation of the City of Council of the City of Avalon, recognizing the month of June as LGBTQ+ Pride Month. Whereas the City of Avalon cherishes the value and dignity of each person, and appreciates the importance of equality and freedom, and whereas, all people, regardless of sexuality, gender identity, age, ability, race, religion, marital status, national origin, or physical challenges, have the right to feel safe in their community, not be discriminated against, and to live without the threat of harassment, and whereas, the diverse LGBTQ+ community continues to contribute to the widespread academic, economic, artistic, and social sphere. academic, economic, artistic, and social sphere within the, within and around the greater community. And whereas, this nation was founded on the principle that every individual has infinite dignity and worth. And the City of Avalon call upon the people of this municipality to embrace this principle, and to work to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists. And whereas, celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for Avalon's LGBTQ+ community, and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. And whereas, the City urges residents to recognize the contributions made by members of the LGBTQ+ community to actively promote the principles of equality, liberty, and justice. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the City Council of the City of Avalon declares the month of June 2023 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month, dated the sixth day of June 2023.
Very nice, thank you. Oh, sure.
Come on, Council.
Yes, yeah, I'll say that too.
All right, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey. And I just wanted to add a, a couple of words of, of additional praise, please, if I may, um, uh, to acknowledge the very kind and generous sponsorship for this year's Pride Celebration on Saturday, June twenty-fourth. US Bank, sorry, small print. And, um, American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, the Avalon Rotary Club, the Catalina Art Association, Catalina Adventure Sailing, Catalina Canyon Inn, Catalina Island Mermaids, Catalina Island Vacation Rentals, the Chi Chi Club of Avalon and the Sea Crest Inn, as well as our, uh, producing partner, Exceptional Music Company. And, um, if you haven't seen the flyers, we've got them out around town. We've got a nice lineup. We fixed some of the things that we didn't think were quite their best last year. Um, no beer garden out in front of the, the stage. We're just going to let the patrons find their way to our many restaurants and bars in town if they want to have something like that. Um, and we have added an evening band, so we'll go into the evening and hopefully drive a little more overnight business, and everyone, you know, burn your sage or light your candles and pray that we finally get some warm sunny weather.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
And this is oral communication, an opportunity for members of the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken. You don't see our librarian.
I know, where's Paul?
Okay.
I thought Paul would go in front of me. Um, I just also wanted to acknowledge and thank the many members of the community and our twenty-one restaurants who participated in Taste of Avalon last Thursday. We had over six hundred, um, participants, tasters, we're calling them, um, for thirty-seven different menu items in twenty-one venues, and, um, two-hundred-and-fifty approximately voter cards returned, and the winners' plaques are being distributed, and will be announced in this Thursday's Thursday update.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, do we have anything?
I do. I've received, uh, one email via Ask.com regarding short-term rentals. Uh, the letter states, "Stereumayor and Council residents in Avalon are now voicing their concerns about the percentage of housing units used for short-term rentals, STR. These numbers are approaching fifty percent of all housing units, and for the Hamilton Cove complex, seventy percent. There appears to be a steady increase in the number of short-term rentals as the Planning Commission approves a few more housing units for STR almost every meeting. These two percentages have the potential to reach ninety percent and sixty-five percent respectively. At the Avalon Planning Commission meeting on May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three, one longtime resident complained that, 'No one is living here, it's just rental units.' The reduction in available and affordable housing units has already forced workers and teachers to live on the mainland. Workers are needed to provide maintenance services for hotels and other businesses, including STR units. Due to a number of factors, there is no expectation that new housing will be built in Avalon. At the Hamilton Cove Complex, there are a number of owners who own and rent two to five units, essentially operating mini hotel businesses. These owners with multiple STR units are very likely diminish occupancy of Avalon hotels. San Diego has taken steps to redo short-term rentals. First, they limit each owner to a single STR unit. Owners are not allowed to set up a second unit in the name of their spouse, nor create corporation to bypass this regulation. The other units they rent must be long-term rentals, which increases the availability of residential housing. Second, San Diego has recognized the need to protect its communities and recreate saturation limits. For most of the City of San Diego, STR units are limited to one percent of the total number of housing units. For Mission Bay, which has a tourist business similar to Avalon, STR units are limited to thirty percent of the total number of housing units. If the City of Avalon wants to continue to have a residential community, it needs to take steps to regulate STR. Your consideration of this problem is very appreciated. Yours truly, George McCormick, thirteen forty-one Playa Azul, Avalon."
Great, thank you. Presentations. We have Christine Guerrero here, Regional Public Affairs Manager, uh, and this is Lon Kittle, and Legislative Director for the Los Angeles County Division of League of California Cities. And welcome to Avalon.
Hello, how are you all?
Good, good.
I have a presentation. I emailed it, but I also have it with me. Should I load it?
Here comes Jamie.
While you're getting set up, I just also wanted to say thank you to Carolyn for getting everyone set up for all the travel and everything for League of California Cities Conference coming up this year, too. So it was nice to get done this week.
Thank you for that reminder about the annual conference. Um, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. It's great to see you all and to be here on the island. I wasn't expecting to come for winter, but, you know, nevertheless, we're here. Uh, but it's the same, it's the same weather on the mainland. I'm dying for the sun. Anyways, I'm just, uh, going to provide a presentation on CalCities. We have rebranded ourselves, we're, we call ourselves CalCities now, and, um, just provide a brief overview of, um, what the organization is about. Let's see if I can get this clicker to go. I don't want to cooperate. Thank goodness for IT.
I was going to do it back there, but I skipped it all over again, so we just, uh...
Okay. No? I'm so sorry, they're still not forwarding? There we go. Okay, great. Uh, again, my name is Christine Guerrero with the League of California Cities. I'm here to provide just a legislative update and a brief overview about the organization. Um, I'm, today I'm going to talk about who we are, what we do, what are some key legislative items that you might know about, and then I'm going to talk a little bit about the November twenty-twenty-four election and what it might mean to the City of Avalon. Um, just a brief overview of the League of California Cities. We are a hundred-and-twenty-five-year-old organization, and our mission is to expand and protect local control for cities through education and advocacy to enhance the quality of life for all Californians. So we are about local decision-making. You all were elected to make decisions for your communities, and it's our mission to preserve that authority. We are made up of four-hundred-and-seventy-nine cities in the state. Uh, we have a large Board of Directors, we have sixteen regional divisions. Avalon is part of the Los Angeles County Division. We have municipal departments, which serve staff and mayors and council members. And then we have five diversity caucuses, and I'll, I'll give an overview of those. Just what our cities look like across California. Uh, we have, uh, the largest cities in the state are members of CalCities, and so is the smallest city in the state, which would be the City of Vernon in Los Angeles County. Of course, the City of Avalon is in that category, too. We're happy to serve you. Um, a little bit about what we do. Our, my main job at CalCities is to provide legislative advocacy and ballot measure advocacy. So, the legislature often has bills that might override local control or local decision-making or impact your budgets. And our job is to protect cities in that process, uh, during the legislative session. So, I'll go over a few bills, but that's a big part of what we do. We also do ballot measure advocacy. There are constitutional amendments or other types of ballot measures that impact local governments on the statewide ballots. And we usually, um, our job is to campaign for or against those kinds of measures. Uh, we do legal advocacy, so I know Scott and his firm are part of our legal department. We will file amicus briefs on big pieces of, uh, I'm sorry, on, on large court cases. Um, one of the most recent that might be relevant to you all is, uh, uh, filing by a couple of charter cities challenging SB nine, so we, we put an amicus brief on that one. Um, we do these throughout the, the year with our legal team. And then we provide member services, and I know Councilmember Lavelle just talked about our annual conference, which I do encourage you to register early, because I think hotels are almost sold out for the Hyatt and the Sheraton. But, um, you know, and a couple of you were, were at our new mayors and council members seminar earlier in the year. And our job at CalCities is to help provide training and education for mayors and council members, and also for our department heads, so your planning directors, your city attorneys, your city managers, and so on. Uh, we also, because you're on the island, it's not always easy to travel. We have a lot of webinars and roundtables, which are accessible. There are learning opportunities for council members. What, a lot of which you're going to learn are what your colleagues are doing across cities across the state. So there are other small cities like Avalon. Maybe they're not islands, but they might be dealing with the same tourism issues, or, uh, how to collect your TOT, um, how to, you know, manage your short-term rentals. Those are the types of things that you might share with other city officials, and chances are, some other city has tried something, and either failed, succeeded, but they've learned some lessons that they'll share with you all. So I think those are the big advantages of attending our, our conferences. Uh, we also have, uh, email listservs, and, for council members and our professional departments. It's an easy way for you to ask your colleagues around the state some simple questions. You put a query out, and you get information back, um, from cities all across the state. A couple of ways for you to engage with us just easily is to explore our website. We have a lot of information on legislation, um, on major policy issues affecting cities. Uh, we also have a weekly newsletter, which will give you kind of the hot topics of the week, particularly when it deals with, um, legislation. The legislative deadline is very rap, the deadlines are very rapid, and it was very quickly. Uh, we just had the, uh, House of Origin deadline just ended, so a lot of bills that either will continue in this two-year session, or they have died this last week, and you'll have those updates from our newsletter. And then we have a monthly, uh, magazine that has more in-depth exposure to relevant issues affecting cities. And of course, we're on social media. On the diversity caucuses that I discussed earlier, we have five diversity caucuses, which I encourage you to explore when you're at our annual conference, or just email the caucuses, um, to join them. We have African-American caucus, a Latino caucus, API caucus, LGBTQ caucus, and of course, our Women's Caucus. So I hope that, I think, uh, Mayor, you're, I think you're engaged on the Women's Caucus. And so it's very, um, these are opportunities, again, for you to talk with other council members that have some of your shared interests. And then the city itself has opportunities to advance in the organization. We have, uh, leadership programs. We have something called the Torch Program for mayors and council members as they pursue, uh, their education in our organization. You receive little torches, which kind of give you your, uh, advanced learning. I know Michael's part of the Torch Program. I think he might be at the highest level, um, or close to it. But, uh, just opportunities that, to recognize the investment that you're putting in for your city and your community. You know, council life, as you know, is not just about reading the agendas and attending city council meetings. It's your, a lot of your off-time, and we want to recognize you for the time that, especially you all, uh, have to travel on a boat to get to the mainland, and sometimes, you know, take, take a flight somewhere and then drive another couple of hours. So, we want to recognize you for those efforts. Also, the city has opportunities to apply for our Helen Putnam Awards Programs. Um, those are recognitions at our annual conference for outstanding city programs. Uh, we have Outstanding Local Streets and Roads Projects Awards. And then we have a local government beacon program, which honors our, uh, city's efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and adopting city policies to promote sustainability. So, I heard your discussions about, um, SB thirteen eighty-three implementation and kind of that learning curve for residents. Um, some of that might be a future, um, beacon program. If you have a really successful education program out there, it might be something you consider once you've kind of put that plan together and be recognized for that. Um, and other ways for you to get involved or to join our policy committees. These are open for city staff and for mayors and council members. This is really our policymaking process at CalCities. Uh, we have a standing, um, principles and guidelines, which help us as staff to know where are, where to take positions on legislation. But some legislation aren't, they're not so black and white, and we want to have those reviewed by our mayors and council members and other department heads. So you can join a policy committee. We have seven of them, and those are open for enrollment at the end of this year, so right after our annual conference. Um, and Michael has been on community services.
And tax and rev.
And rev and tax, uh, which is a really important one. We have public works in, in transportation. We have public safety. So there's a number of those that you can see listed here. Um, but all of you are eligible to apply for those policy committees and be a part of the dialogue to make decisions on our policy. Uh, a quick legislative update. As I mentioned, um, we just reached a key deadline in the legislature, so bills that were introduced at the beginning of this two-year session in January had to be passed out of their House of Origin last week. So all Senate bills had to pass the Senate, Assembly bills had to pass the Assembly, to move on to the next House. And eventually, their goal, that legislative goal, is to make it to the governor's desk by the beginning of September. Um, there's a couple of bills I wanted to highlight for you that impact, um, the City of Avalon. Uh, before I do that, because I'm going out of order on my slides here, uh, I wanted to give you, uh, the two thousand twenty-three, our advocacy priorities. So what are, what are the major issues that we have been pressing in the state Capitol? And in our district offices, we do a lot of advocacy at the district level, so we're talking to your assemblyman, your assembly, or your senator, um, having conversations with her about, about our budget asks and other legislation. One of our main budget asks that we are making some headway on is our, um, request to expand investments, uh, to prevent and reduce homelessness, and to increase the supply of affordable housing. We, uh, are asking for three billion dollars, that's with a B, for, uh, funding from the state budget, ongoing permanent funding for cities to address the housing affordability crisis and to prevent individuals from entering into a homelessness situation. Um, you might say, "How are we going to get that money?" We're in, the state's in a thirty-five-billion-dollar deficit. But no one is arguing that the homelessness crisis, and as you've all discussed on the dais, the affordability- the affordability issue is a crisis across the state. So last week, we did make some inroads on this conversation. We had 30 legislators, including your state senator, sign on to a letter to the governor and to budget leadership in both houses, urging them to fund our request for $3 billion. And we would like to get this money to cities. At this point in time, this program, which currently exists, that the $3 billion would go to, are not going to Avalon. They're going to, the money is going to the counties and to larger cities, but it's really not getting to the smaller cities that need the funding. So our request is to get that money out, make it a permanent source that you can count on yearly, and get it in your hands to use. Some of the priority, and let me just say something else about the budget. The deadline, the constitutional deadline to pass the budget is next week. It's June 15. So we will have an answer to our request within the next week, and we'll keep you updated on that. So we urge you to just keeping, keep pressing both your state assemblyman and your state senator and continue to ask them for that ongoing funding. As far as legislation, some key bills that did pass their House of Origin deadline are SB 423, sponsored by Senator Weiner. This expands his SB 35, which was passed about three years ago. The reason why this is important to Avalon is because the new legislation takes out the sunset of SB 35, which was supposed to sunset in a couple of years, but also expands its provisions to the coastal zone. So those, so where SB 35 might not have applied in Avalon, if this legislation passes, it will. And of course, this allows for ministerial approval of multifamily housing, which means housing projects, multifamily housing projects, if you are, if they are SB 35-eligible, wouldn't come before the council for review. It would be a ministerial review. And what we want to see, and what you all want to see and we're elected for, is to make those decisions for your community. So we are asking for an opposed position for cities. We have a large, what we call a NASCAR letter with about 250 city logos on that. We're circulating to the legislature. So we'll make sure to get Avalon's logo on that if we don't already. Another piece of legislation I want to highlight for you is AB 1484 by Assemblymember Burr. He's out of the San Fernando Valley, and this deals with temporary public employees. So your seasonal employees, which are probably really important in Avalon, especially for all the summer programs that were just discussed. This would require your temporary employees to be automatically included in your bargaining units with permanent employees. So this would, this adds a lot of costs to staffing your city services. So we're concerned about that, and we're asking for an opposed position on that. And then the last bill, which I know definitely applies to Avalon, and you might see some significant costs in your budget, is AB 1637, which would require cities and counties to secure a .gov domain no later than January 2027. So, right, you're not the only city of Avalon or the only Avalon. And to make that deadline without state funding is really, it's unreasonable, and it's an unfunded mandate. So basically, this bill wants you to move your entire system of emails and your websites over to a .gov domain in about two and a half years. And there is no funding for that. So I don't think most cities have a problem with changing that format, except the timeline and the funding are issues when the state is requiring you to do it and not giving you the funding to provide that service.
Can we talk about that just for a second? Because we're trying to get that domain name changed right now, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and the process is very long. So you go through a federal process. If you already know what the entanglement looks like. So to put a deadline on something where you have to apply with the federal government, and then it's a rolling, it's just a rolling kind of admission into your .gov, you are not guaranteed to make this timeline. And then to hire the consultants and the other IT professionals to help you do this, that's the, I think that's the unreasonable part of this. So again, it's not that there isn't a willingness to do that, to make this change, but it's more about, you know, the timeline and the lack of funding for such a large cost to the city. And the last thing I just want to bring to your attention is connected to the November 2024 ballot. The California Business Roundtable, it's a large organization made up of multimillion-dollar and billion-dollar companies. It's a big advocacy group in the state of California. It's sponsoring a ballot measure, which they have qualified for the 2024 ballot to amend the Constitution, which would really impact both the state and local governments. And specifically where this would impact Avalon is that the measure is retroactive to January 1, 2022. So even though it's not going to go before the voters for another year and a half, maybe, it's retroactive to the beginning of this year. And the major provision for every city in the state is that it restricts the ability to charge fees and fees for products and services that the city provides. So it, the measure has new constitutional definitions for what a fee can be. And if it doesn't fit into those categories, it has to be a tax, which would be subject to a two-thirds vote. But your fees, which I know you have a discussion on that today, would be subject to legal scrutiny because if someone can challenge a city's fee if they aren't the exact cost of service, which is the minimum amount, defined as the minimum amount necessary to provide that service, which is a nebulous kind of term, which I don't know if Scott has a definition for that, but I don't think there is a definition. So you could see where challenges might come up to the city's fee schedule on anything. And so it's just about protecting the city from frivolous lawsuits. Really, that's what this is about. This would actually expose the city to frivolous lawsuits on your fees. It also franchises, jeopardizes franchise fee authority, and it changes the process to impose fines and penalties. So your regulatory fees would go into a judicatory process that could also be challenged. So we're really concerned about this. We think that there is approximately $2 billion of revenue that comes into cities that are at risk. This will affect, the other part of this that I didn't mention is that any local tax measure that was passed starting on January 1 would also be, has to fit the parameters of this measure. So for those cities that have gone to the voters to ask them for, you know, an add-on sales tax, a TOT, business license tax, they would actually have to take their measure back to the voters, even though it already passed once. So you can see the challenges for cities.
This would not impact the hospital fee because we did it before January 1. And even if it did, the language in the hospital bill, it passed by 72%, and it has a termination date. So we would be okay even if we were under this measure.
I made sure to check with Scott with that first, too. We talked about that in the vote over. But you could see how, even for some of your neighboring cities, that this could be a problem. Or if there's ever a discussion on expanding your TOT or other revenue measures that cities need to provide services. So again, we hope that the council will consider that at a future council meeting. We've given staff the materials to look at that. I'm happy to answer any questions about the measure or about legislation. I wanted to be mindful of time. So hopefully, I didn't do too long. But I'm happy for questions if there are any.
Questions, council, staff?
The only one I had was, there had been a measure that was being mandated about, about an additional 15% tax on transient rental units. I don't know if that's died or if that's still ongoing or if it's what the status of that is.
So that is, it's a, I believe the bill number is by Senator Limone. SB 584, thank you so much. Senator Limone's bill. And she is proposing a statewide TOT to fund affordable housing and homeless services. We have concerns about this bill, and we've been talking to the author. What we've learned from our office is that she is not committed to a statewide TOT. We've talked to her about the concerns that we have as cities to collect our TOT, their major revenue source for cities across the state, including those that depend on tourism. So she is open to discussions. We're having those discussions with her on how to change that revenue source. But you're going to still see the bill move as it, probably as a two-year bill, which means that it's going to, they'll have some discussions about it. They want the vehicle itself, so the bill number, to move in the legislative process for this two-year process. So it's going to move, but there'll probably be amendments, since she has stated that she's open to amendments from us. So you might see an opposed unless amended from us, but we're having discussions with her now. And we've communicated our concerns with her.
The other thing that I would love to see CalCities tackle, since you do help cover 105 small cities, is looking at changing the formulas in the way that bills are written. Currently, most funding sources come as a population percentage. And we serve a lot more people than live here. And we get screwed almost every time. Even though we're appreciative of the funds that we receive, they are significantly smaller than what they should be for how many people we actually help provide services for. So I don't know if there's a way to take an honest look at that and advocate on behalf of small cities to reevaluate how that fund is given, whether it's the CBGB block grants that we're looking at tonight and other things like that, to take into account those communities that are impacted by vacation rentals, those communities that have people who have second homes, those communities that provide services to visitors but don't have the residential count to make it make sense.
Those are conversations we're constantly having with our small cities. We have cities like Vernon, like the City of Commerce, where you have large daytime populations, but their actual, you know, community itself, their residents, are smaller, and they're just not getting the money for either the truck traffic or all the impacts that they're having. So we continue to have those conversations with legislators to try to get more equitable funding allocations. I would also encourage you to make sure that you, every time you see your state senator and your assembly person, assemblyman, to just, you know, keep at it on that message. It has to come from all over. We do discuss that a lot in our, when we have funding opportunities from the state.
Thank you. Question, did anybody get in touch with us?
No. All right, thank you.
And I, and just, I just want to say, I highly recommend any of you getting on policy committees. They're interesting.
They're interesting because you get a sense of all the communities and council members throughout the state. You know, we have varying views throughout the state. The other advantage, where, when Michael joined, they were all in person. We have four meetings a year, and three of them are virtual. So there's really an opportunity for you to participate. Our meeting, our first in-person meeting since before COVID is in Pomona. So it's, you know, you're going to take the moment.
In a couple of weeks.
Yeah. So there's opportunities for you to engage. I think if there are any bright sides to the pandemic is that it has made us all realize that accessibility through Zoom formats like Zoom or Teams are beneficial to our council members.
Christine, I have one question. If there is any bills, the ones that you mentioned or any other bills that come across for us that we think we should voice or advocate for our city, could we contact you? Or is there, like, would we have to write a letter together?
So we are a one-stop shop for your legislative issues. You either email me. City staff can go onto our website, where we will have our, you'll type in the bill number. You'll see our position on it. If we have a sample letter for cities, so your staff doesn't need to recreate their will. You're running a city. You don't need to create letters. We already have those form letters. You're going to put your city logo on it, have the mayor sign it, or whatever your process is, and send it out to your legislator. So I'm always available, but our website is pretty user-friendly for that information.
And my other question, do you guys have, do you get the updates? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you. Enjoy. And now.
It's that time again.
Good evening, City Council. Want to start the presentation tonight by just kind of quickly, at a high level, going over the budget document itself. I've provided a draft of the budget to council on Friday, and my plan is tomorrow morning to have the budget document along with the presentations over the last couple of meetings available on the city's website for anyone watching at home if they want to review the document themselves as well. So I do have the table of contents in the budget document, which is hyperlinked, so counsel the version I have. If there's any sections you want to be able to jump to, all you have to do is click on the page number, and it will jump to the section. The first section in the budget is the overall budget message, which really just summarizes a lot of the information that I've provided over the last few meetings. Kind of moving from there, there's also a section where we go over the full-time equivalent comparison. So that gives you an opportunity to see how the staffing levels have changed at the city from fiscal year 20 to the proposed fiscal year 24 budget. Fiscal year 20's budget, again, was a pre-COVID budget in the sense that it was developed before the shutdowns and the restrictions and the changes we made. So it does provide a good comparison of kind of where we were at and where we're at currently. This page here is kind of the fund balance schedule, and this is what's going to kind of drive the budget presentation. I know the numbers on here are small, so you don't need to really look at that for that. But just reading it left to right, it has the operating revenues of each major fund, the operating expenditures, any grant revenues, then any capital outlays. And so if you're reading it left to right, you should be able to see what the reserve level is at the beginning of the year and what the activity is anticipated during the year, and then where we expect reserves to be in each fund at the end of the year. And we'll go over the numbers in detail, but that's just kind of, this schedule here is kind of what drove the presentation that I'm going to give tonight. And then lastly, for each department, there is a summary, which breaks down the salaries and benefits, maintenance and operations, and all of the other operating expenditures by category. Again, looking at fiscal year 19 actuals, so that's a pre-COVID year, all the way to the proposed budget, with the detail page behind it that shows, you know, all the different accounts we use that get to those numbers. So that's how to read the budget document itself. So I'm going to jump now to the presentation. So again, the version of the budget I'm presenting tonight is still a draft. And by that, I mean if there are additions or edits, we're happy to make those changes before bringing it back to council on the 20th for adoption. Again, we're going to focus a lot on the operating expenditures, and we group those by the following categories: salaries and benefits, maintenance and operations, contract services, as well as internal services. And anytime we're giving a staffing level, at least in this presentation, it's all based on FTE, full-time equivalent. There are certain positions within the city that have their time allocated to multiple funds. So for example, the Public Works Director has a portion of his time allocated to harbor capital activities, a portion to the general fund, a portion to housing, and a portion to sewer and saltwater as well. And so when we're giving the numbers, it's not based on headcount, but it's based on how many hours we're allocating to those funds. So again, this is similar to that page I was showing you and kind of driving the basis for the presentation. I just tried to condense it to make it a little easier to view on the screen. And again, we'll have a copy of the presentation on the city's finance page tomorrow. So you can see in the general fund going left to right, we have operating revenues estimated for next fiscal year to be 12.4 million. And then if you look at salaries and benefits, maintenance, operations, contract, services, net capital outlays, and so that would factor how much reserves we're spending after considering grant revenues, transfers to other funds. So there's a couple of funds the general fund subsidizes, and so that's what's captured in that transfers column. And then lastly, any drawn reserves. And you can see in both the harbor and the general fund, we are looking to draw on reserves to fund a lot of the significant capital outlays in the budget. to fund a lot of the significant capital outlays in the budget. A lot of that, we had significant planned spend this year that did not occur as we were pursuing additional grant opportunities. So if you look at where our reserve level is, or was estimated in this year's budget, and where it's ending in next year's budget, it's very similar. So a lot of the spend we had anticipated last year is really just getting rolled forward into this year's budget. Some of the, the funds going down below, I'll go over at just a high level. But again, most of the budgets can be focused on the general fund and the harbor fund, as that's where most of our activity is. We did pull out the heart of the hospital as separate from the general fund. It does roll up in our audited financials into the general fund, but I wanted to pull it out here. So basically, that's, it's a pass-through. We get a add-on sales tax included in that 1.9 number, as well as the Measure H tax. But 100% of that just goes then to the hospital. The, the sales tax is a straight pass-through, whereas Measure H, it's a reimbursement for costs associated with the, the funding of the new hospital. So not, not to jump out of order, but you'll see in the, the warrant report in this council's meeting, we did cut a check to the hospital for Measure H, reimbursing them for approved expenditures related to that, that project. But from a kind of a fund balance standpoint, it should be money in, money out. The special revenue fund, so the Housing Authority, we have operating revenues of 60,000. That's primarily interest income. Salaries and benefits, a portion of the Public Works Director, a portion of the city manager, and a portion of the assistant city manager's time is charged to the Housing Authority for their, their management of, of that activity. Nominal maintenance expense there. And the contract services is, we do have a contract with R S G that provides housing-specific consulting services, as well as our city attorney. That's what makes up the 40,000 there. And the Housing Authority, we do have two major capital projects in next year's budget, 400,000 for the rehabilitation of the four units at 206 East Whitley, as well as an additional 200,000 for the, the development of that second building location on the property. Local transportation, that's our local return funds. So County Metro has a number of, of sales tax measures, and the city, since we manage our own transit agency, we receive revenues from the county, from those sales tax revenues. So that's our local transportation fund. Again, the two major expenditures that come out of that is the commuter subsidy. So annually, through the Prop A discretionary fund, the city receives approximately $1 million, 700,000 of which goes towards the commuter subsidy program. Occasionally, there's additional funds available, and the, the city goes after those when we can, and that's how sometimes we're able to have those additional subsidies, like the one currently going on in June. But the, about 700,000 in next year's budget is for that, as we just are anticipating kind of that base allocation. And the remainder of that is for our land transit contract. So most of transportation concept, so that's the dial or ride and fixed route service, most of those, the, the contract with TC is covered by those local return funds, whereas the Avalon Transit Fund kind of picks up, or ultimately the general fund picks up the, the portion that's not covered by those local return revenues. Street administration, that's our gas tax fund, so highway use tax and the S B 1 R M R A. So you can see in next year's budget, we estimate our gas tax revenues in the city to be 187,000. We have contracted services of 90,000. Most of that is our street sweeping contract, but then we also do have some funding in there for street maintenance repairs that maybe don't rise to the level of a, a capital project. The 350,000 in capital outlays is for some major street improvements as far as paving in the plan for next year. Traffic control and safety, that is our code enforcement you can think of. The 90,000 is revenue we receive from their administrative sites or parking citations. Salaries and benefits, if you're comparing this to prior years, you'll see it's higher than in prior years. So every year with the budget, we look at kind of our labor allocations with employees to see if it makes sense, how we're dividing their costs. And so more of code enforcement's time is being charged to the traffic safety fund, based on, on the activity they're having, and that's really driving the increase. So it's not that we're adding any staffing to code enforcement, we've just kind of looked at how we've been charging or allocating their labor costs, and we're charging more of it to the traffic safety fund in this budget. And they have some nominal maintenance and contract services in there. A lot of that has to do with the, the appeals process for, for vehicles. C D B G, you'll see zero activity down there. That's not that we're not, we're going to have any activity. There's an asterisk in the capital outlays. We do expect to have about 200,000 saved up in our C D B G annual allocations, and we're going to be using that for the curb cutting project, second phase, where there's six to eight intersections that have been identified for, for curb cuts and other pedestrian improvements of that nature. So the, the net outlay is zero, because we have 200,000 in grant revenue, and then 200,000 going out as a capital outlay. Again, we, we receive about 30,000 annually from C D B G, and we work with our partners at, at L A County to kind of administer that program. And so there's something on the agenda tonight with them, and, and they've been a great assistance for us on those projects. And lastly, on this list, the McLean Hall of Putnam, that's, we have a fund that goes towards purchase of fire equipment. It's really donation-driven, so I, we don't have any anticipated activity, but that could change if we do receive donations for those types of purchases. So the next slide compares the budget as presented to council tonight with the budget that was previously presented at the meetings in May. So you can see there really hasn't been a whole lot of change from the, that first meeting in May. We had budgeted revenues at 14.1 million, and the, the current version has just 14.07, so only a $7,000 difference in the estimates between what we presented in the first meeting in May. Similarly, not a whole lot of changes to maintenance and operating expenditures, and we'll go into these in more detail. This slide's really just to show that there haven't been a whole lot of changes from the meetings we had earlier during the budget process. You'll see that internal services is a bit higher, 2.17 million compared to the 1.99 previously. And that's because at the first meeting in May, we didn't have all of the planned capital outlays in the internal service funds factored. So for example, we've since added, that was presented at the last meeting, 200,000 for vehicle replacement in the, the vehicle maintenance account. So that, that funding is charged, or allocated across the different funds. And so the general fund is paying for a portion of that outlay that wasn't previously presented at the May meeting. The main change in the net capital outlays from what was previously presented to what's in the budget to be adopted really has to do with the timing of expenditures. I'd originally estimated some hillside repair expenditures occurring before June 30, but really that project I've shifted now into the, the upcoming fiscal year 24, as there's been little spend so far to date on that. And I hadn't previously presented net transfers, and so that's new in this budget presentation. But as we get into the kind of more details, you'll see that a lot of the information really hasn't changed substantially from what we presented at the beginning of May. So here's a breakdown of how I came up with the revenue estimates for the general fund. So that 12.4 million consists of 7 million of T O T revenues. Again, T O T in fiscal year 22 totaled approximately 8.7 million. In fiscal year 23, this current fiscal year, I estimate it'll come in somewhere around 7.8 million. So the next year's budget is considerably higher than what we had used in prior budgets, but it's still about 10% below where I think we're going to finish the current fiscal year. So the, again, the goal is really to, we, we did see a considerable increase during CO, or post-COVID, as visitors returned to the island. And so we're trying to set an estimate that we think can still realistically be achieved, but also more accurately reflect the, the type of revenue we can expect. The next largest revenue is the, the city's sales tax, so that's 1% of the, the current 10% sales tax. I, I get that estimate from our sales tax consultant, H D L, and then I just round it down to provide a little cushion. But they provide a, a breakdown for me every year of estimated revenues. That's usually fairly accurate. Admissions tax is that third line down. And so if you take ad tax, sales tax, and T O T, that's three-fourths of our city's general fund revenue, is what I consider those visitor-driven revenues. So it really just kind of highlights the importance of those revenues for the general fund's budget. The property tax. Other taxes include our business license tax, franchise fees, as well as we receive a P S A F. It's a drive from a sales tax, but I've grouped it with the, the other tax. So when we're talking about the license permits fees, as well as charges for services, those make up about 10% of the city's overall general fund budget. Charges for services primarily is our ambulance fees, which generate over 450,000 a year. I think I budgeted 475, and we're on track actually this year, I believe, to exceed 500,000. So I do try to remain conservative in all those estimates as well. Other revenues include some kind of annually recurring grants. So the city receives what's called COPs, it's Citizens Option for Policing Related, and we use it to, to fund additional deputies for those special events and for the busy weekends. And so that's 165,000 of that 500,000 in other revenues, as well as we have 200,000 in planning-related grants and 40,000 in interest income right now in the, in the budget, making up that 494. So then the next slide is kind of a breakdown of salaries and benefits at 4.2 million, based on major departments in the general fund. Again, there really haven't been a lot of, any changes since the presentation in May, when we went over kind of all the positions in detail. But you can see wages and overtime are 2.7 million, or about 65% of that total spend on salaries and benefits. Also included than that is our unfunded accrued pension liability. So annually, the city spends about 900,000 to close the gap on its pension funding. That number can change based on a number of factors, including market performance. It's always phased over several years, but depending on how the market performance goes, I do expect the city's overall U A L contributions to increase from the 900,000 we're looking at now to potentially 1.1 million in the next, say, two or three years. They do phase the good years and the bad years, and fiscal year 21 was a really strong years for Calpers, fiscal year 22 not as much. But that, that is a number to keep an eye on, and I might be coming back and presenting on it just to provide additional information on kind of what it means at a, at a future meeting. But you can see the general fund pays about 40% of that overall U A L. And maintenance and operations in the general fund. You can see there's about a million in the general fund for that. Fire department maintenance includes training and travel. What I've tried to do on these slides is kind of call out either categories of expenditures that make up the majority of the money within that grouping, or what I saw as significant changes from prior years. So really across the board, but I, I called it out for, for the fire department here. Training and travel in prior years was budgeted closer to 20,000, but as more training opportunities present themselves, kind of in a post-COVID world, we did increase that budget there. We also included 20,000 for new P P and E turnout. And again, chief can speak to the, the specifics of these. Public works, most of the maintenance and operating expenditures relate to utilities, as well as gas for the, the public works fleet. Community services has 300,000 in the budget, of which 120,000 is Fourth of July programming. That number's before any of the, the donation offsets. In, in prior years, we would not necessarily say include the fireworks within the budget, because ultimately it would be covered by donations. But the, the goal here is to try to show the, the full cost before the, the donations of the program. And so that 120,000 is, is before any offset from donations of what the city spends. That includes the, the band, travel for the band, lodging for the band, meals for the band, the, the entertainment on the street with some of the local bands that participate, the barge for the fireworks and the fireworks themselves, is what makes up that number there.
I'm curious, because I don't recall, about how much, how much we receive in donations for that.
So generally, donations have covered, I know, all of the fireworks and then some. So the fireworks, I think, are 40,000. I, I want to say probably the city still after donation. I'd have to go and look, but I'd say we're, it's in the tens of thousands still of what we spend after the donations. So contract services, you can see in law enforcement, that's the, the large one there, and that's our contract with the sheriff. Right now, we've budgeted it to go up by about 10%. That also includes that 165,000 for, and here I spelt out the acronym, that's Citizens Option for Public Safety, which we historically have used for the, the additional deputy presence on Front Street during the busy season. Contract services and planning include 125,000 for consulting services, that's our sage crest, 75,000 for legal, that would be our city attorney, and 250,000 for various planning reports. But again, that's offset by, by that 200,000 in the revenue side and grant funding. You can see the chamber marketing we group in the contract services, as well as in the kind of other general fund, that includes a stormwater permitting, as well as a portion of the wastewater treatment contract that we charge to the general fund. So lastly, is the, kind of of the operating expenditures in the general fund, is the internal services. On the left, I put what the percentage the department pays of the overall internal service fund. So that's general admin, insurance, and vehicle maintenance. There are a number of factors for each fund that I consider in coming up with the allocation percentage. So for the general fund, the amount your, or for the general administration, the amount each department's allocated is based on the size of each department's budgets, its staffing levels, and then as well as kind of discussions with management of the overall percentage breakdown. So if two departments had 10 employees, and they all made the exact same money, they would, in theory, for when I look at staffing levels, be allocated the same percentage of general admin. But, you know, you may have some departments with more employees, or some departments that contract out services. And so there's a number of factors that go into coming up with that number. Law enforcement's 2.8% is how to read it, but law enforcement, we don't allocate any of the costs for the vehicle maintenance, and we don't allocate any costs for the insurance fund to law enforcement. And that's because insurance costs are included in the sheriff's contract, so they don't fall under our C I R A general liability insurance. And similarly, we don't do any maintenance on their vehicles, so they don't pay any of the, the garages' costs. So again, with insurance, some of the things we consider in coming up with the allocation percentage is the department's budget, its capital assets, its claims history, and then discussions with management. And similar with vehicle maintenance, we look at prior year expenditure activity and discussion with the, the garage and public work staff. Again, this is a breakdown of the capital outlays net of any grant funding. I did put an asterisk, I want to draw attention to the per capita parks. That wasn't included in the May 18th presentation, because in that presentation, I assumed most of that spending was going to be occurring in the current fiscal year. I've since shifted that to the next fiscal year. We've already received the grant funding for it, so it'll be an unearned revenue on our financials. So right now, I just have the, the total capital outlays, and that doesn't factor that, we've already received the grant funding. Happy to talk or have Bob come up and talk on any of the projects, but you can see they're the ones we discussed at the, the last meeting. I guess one other thing, just to highlight with the vehicle equipment replacement and the fire, we don't anticipate any actual spend of purchasing any of the, the new vehicles out of that 894,000. We are looking to purchase a new ambulance, but we had monies in the budget this year kind of for that purpose. So again, I don't expect any cash going out the door of that 894,000, but that's setting aside specific reserves within the general fund for that purpose. And how we came up with that number is looking at the, the current fleet and the, at the, the fire station and the useful life, and what their replacement cost would be for those. And so that's what the cost would be to kind of fully fund those replacements.
And J M F, is, are we on our last year?
This, this is the last year of the J M F loan repayment. But what we're going to need to do is make sure we're setting aside money in future budgets to pay for the, you know, the rehab of that field. You know, it's, it's in pretty good shape, and luckily, the, the cost to redo the field won't be as much as the cost initially put it in. But there are some significant costs associated with maintaining that field, and I think the, the turf needs to be replaced every 10 years or so, and we're, we're coming up on that in the next and we're coming up on that in the next few years. Luckily, with COVID, we didn't have quite as much activity for a couple of years, so that might be able to give us a little extra life out of it. But yes, this is the last payment, which is great, and then we can start saving for the replacement of it.
I mean, okay, because that's payments over $100,000, isn't it?
It's generally $137,000, but this is the last payment, and it's only $96,000. So it's slightly less this year, too.
Okay. I'm just concerned with that whole $364,000. It doesn't seem like it's enough money. Casino, casino, dive park, restaurant?
So the, we're, right now, on the budget have $60,000 for new restrooms at the dive park to kind of replace the porta-potties that are currently out there. It wouldn't be a restroom building. It would be more of a portable structure. So maybe similar to some of the other kind of trailered restrooms that might be around town.
Because there was a conversation a while back, right, about putting something more permanent out there?
I'd still like to at some point if we could.
I mean, the challenge there is that it's not our land where they currently. So that's one of the advantages of having a portable option.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Is it possible to look at potentially either increasing or including the loan amount for JMF in future budgets, only so that we can also do some maintenance and building work on the additional parts of the field? The bleachers and safety access throughout the bleacher system, I think, really needs to be looked at and reviewed. And then just making sure that things are upkept in terms of other facilities up there, too.
There'll always be money there, I'm sure.
Yeah. I mean, it won't be to the extent of that much money per year, but there's going to be a couple of big other projects there that I think should be addressed sooner rather than later, if we can.
That's good information, and that's the type of information we need to make sure we're updating our capital program. So even if we're not having the spend in this year, we need to make sure we're capturing that information in that document. So we'll make sure to have that updated.
Thanks, Matt.
Again, the two transfers coming out of the general fund. Sorry, if we can go back to capital if there's other questions. So the two transfers coming out of the general fund relate to traffic safety and to Avalon Transit. Again, both of those are, transfer amounts are slightly higher than kind of the historical averages. Traffic safety, it has to do with what I mentioned earlier, how we are allocating more of Code's time to this fund. Previously, Code was 50%, traffic safety 25%, solid waste 25%, sewer fund, and that was for their work with the FOG program, as well as their work with the Green Bag Inspection Program. But looking at kind of where their time actually is spent, we changed it in this year's budget to 80, 10, and 10. It's not that they won't still be actively working on those programs. It's just a better reflection of how they've been spending their time. And so that really counts for that increase in that net transfer. Avalon Transit, of that $330,000, about $100,000 is the portion of TC's contract that's not covered with the local return funds from Metro, as well as a portion of one admin analyst's time for managing the program and internal service charges. And the one we really looked at and increased was the percentage of the garage's total costs that the transit fund is contributing to, based on the amount of time our mechanics have been spending working on the transit vehicles. The next breakdown or section are our enterprise funds. So that's our harbor fund, our sewer fund, saltwater, solid waste, and the Avalon Transit Fund. So again, I wanted to provide a comparison to the previous versions of the budget that were presented in May. Operating revenues, right now, in the current version are $8.7 million, and they were $8.64 in the prior version. The main cause of that increase is I did increase our transfers revenue from $100,000 to $150,000. Again, that one's a difficult one to predict, so I always try to go really low on that one. But for the past three years, it's, well, it's on track this year, and for the two years prior, it exceeded $300,000. So I still think setting it at $150,000 is a pretty conservative figure. Again, that's the fee we get on mooring sales. So some years, there's more activity in mooring sales, or there's larger, more valuable sales that occur. And so it's a revenue I always try to be conservative on, because it's really, in a lot of ways, out of our control. You can see no changes to salaries and benefits since it was presented last. Slight decreases in maintenance and operations. The increase for contract services relates to the Falconer's contract. So the sewer fund does pay for the majority of the Falcon contract, about $50,000 of the, I believe, $80,000 proposed. But the difference, the $30,000 or so, is covered by the harbor fund. Considering the benefits, the harbor fund receives from those services, we thought it was appropriate to allocate to them.
And we don't get any assistance from outside for that Falcon program? Like Chamber or?
Well, I mean, we now rent the beaches out to the businesses, and so that's new revenue that does go to the harbor fund. So we have the program now where we rent the beaches in the summer months. And so we don't have any specific funding dedicated for the Falcons, to answer the question. But, you know, we do have harbor revenues, so the, all the rents along the waterfront go to the harbor fund to pay for services like that.
Okay.
Again, internal service funds, expenses are up from what I presented previously, and that, again, was driven by the capital projects that weren't included in the last presentation. But you can see it's, again, very similar to what we had presented in May to council. Now, the next slide is a breakdown of the harbor operating revenues. So you can see cross-channel warfage. Currently, it's a $3 warfage fee, and how it's broken down is the first $0.50 is dedicated 100% to harbor capital activities, and the remaining $2.50 is split 75-25 between harbor operations and harbor capital. So you can see as a total, we're looking at $3.75 million in next year's budget. That's pretty much flat with where we expect we're going to finish this year, but down about 10% from that fiscal year '22 high. Again, we had a really strong second half of the year, and I'm optimistic that, you know, weather kind of attributed to the dip we've seen in the last four or five months. And so hopefully, we can see it closer to that fiscal year '22 number, but we're really just budgeting to have it match what we've experienced this current year. And that cross-channel warfage is about 45% of the harbor fund's operating revenues. And I just wanted to highlight that, because the, historically, we don't change that $3 fee on an annual basis, and it's tied to passenger accounts. And so that means we need the number of visitors visiting via cross-channel to increase by 5% a year to keep up with our, you know, increased labor costs, but going up 5% a year, our increased contract costs. And so if we're not seeing our visitor counts grow by 5% a year, that means we need every other revenue source to grow by 10% to kind of make up for the difference. And so really, I only bring this up to highlight it, that fortunately, especially with our cruise ship warfage being significantly above kind of where we had been historically and where we had budgeted. You know, we're in a strong position this year and next year, but it does present kind of structural challenges with the budget when it's so tied to increasing number of visitors. And while I'd like to think we can have more and more people share the island with, there will come a point where it's going to be difficult to see that revenue grow without looking at the fee itself.
Sure.
Cruise ship warfage, again, I mentioned it. Right now, on the budget, I have it $1.4 million. What I did is I took the current schedule for the next fiscal year and assumed a 90% occupancy rate. This year through April, we've seen 94.8% occupancy rates. So if we hit that 90%, the total would actually be closer to $1.5 million. But again, just to provide additional cushion in case there's more cancellations. The positive is generally, when a ship's canceled, we're able to reschedule them later in the week. And so we don't usually see too many drop-off entirely, which definitely helps from a revenue standpoint.
So I don't know. Cross-channel warfage, Fund 103, and then Fund 104, what's the difference?
The 104 is our harbor capital fund. And so all the expenditures in Fund 104 are either kind of maintaining our existing infrastructure or significant capital projects. So how we've kind of divided up our harbors, kind of, oh, there's three funds, but there's two main we operate out of. Fund 103, that's our harbor operations. And so that's harbor patrol, that's our restroom maintenance contract, our showers, our trash collection, kind of all the things that go to the day-to-day operations of the harbor. Fund 104 is our capital account, and so maintaining existing infrastructure. So if we're spending money replacing, you know, small decking, maybe things that don't rise to a major capital project, but are designed to maintain the infrastructure of the harbor, and not necessarily the operations of the harbor, those types of activities go to Fund 104. And so I think the intent was, why we split it out, is just to make sure we're dedicating money each year to maintaining that capital infrastructure and providing revenue source that we can use as our, as our match with grant funds to, you know, maintain and improve our infrastructure.
Yeah, so the revenues are 3.7%?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, sorry.
So other major revenues you can see are pier and tideland rentals, harbor use fee and ad tax, annual mooring permits, transfer fees, as I mentioned earlier, and then other revenues. So again, we haven't had any changes to the salaries and benefits that were presented at the first meeting in May. But similar to the general fund, about 63% of the labor costs relate to wages and overtime, with the remainder either taxes, employer contributions for pension, medical benefits, health benefits, things of that nature. Again, the harbor, based on its staffing levels, has allocated 33% of the city's unfunded pension liability. And again, we just look at the staffing level in the harbor relative to the staffing level of other departments when we're dividing up those costs. And generally speaking, we do combine within harbor operations the patrol component, as well as the maintenance component. So we have three dedicated harbor maintenance personnel that we don't group with public works, or at least historically, we haven't. We group them with harbor operations, as well as one parking control maintenance, and one full-time equivalent of the maintenance sanitation workers. So that's the summer cleaners within the harbor. So I wanted to split those out there, but again, we generally have combined them. And a lot of the reason why I stick with things in that way, it just makes it easier for year-over-year comparisons. But it's something we can look at if we want to group things differently in the future. So on the maintenance and operations side, you can see harbor admin has a budget request of $134,000. $90,000 of that, though, is for additional harbor insurance. So the harbor for the vessel activity and the activity on the water requires additional insurance beyond the CERA coverage, and so that comes out of the harbor admin fund. The $690,000 in operations, 70% or 69% of that is really utilities. And that does include $225,000 in the budget for sewer and $100,000 for saltwater services. So because the harbor has a number of restrooms that it's responsible for, whether it's the mole or the green pier, it's assessed sewer, saltwater charges, given the volume of activity that goes on there. And so those occur as the transfers from the harbor into the sewer and saltwater fund, and that's what makes up the majority of that $690. Other harbor operating expenditures are credit card processing fees of $80,000 in the budget and fuel purchases of $55,000. So if you take the 80 and the 55, plus the 476, that gets pretty much all of the $690 that's requested there. Capital maintenance accounts include $600,000 for vessel maintenance, and so that provides the harbor the ability to utilize specialized contractors or mechanics outside of our garage. But because it's not going through our garage, we charge them separately in the harbor capital. $30,000 for annual mooring maintenance, $30,000 for float maintenance. Again, these are expenditures that may not rise to a new capital asset, but if we're replacing the anti-skid slip on a float, or if we're replacing, you know, a foot section of a mooring chain and not replacing the ball or a whole chain itself, those are the types of kind of maintenance expenditures that we've historically charged out of the harbor capital account. So then in contract services, you can see most of the contract services fall under public works. Again, we can talk about maybe changing it in the future, but really, for comparison purposes, the reason I've kept them there. The biggest one is our county fire for lifeguard services. That is an estimate. I usually get sometime around this time of year the actual number from the county. But right now, I have that estimated at $995,000, which is about a 6%, 6.5% increase from last year's contract. So hopefully, you know, hopefully, I'm on the high side, and we can see a little savings there. But that's how I came up with that figure there. On the admin side, the contracts primarily relate to our net mooring and other computer systems utilized in the harbor, as well as city attorney. Harbor operations, $289,000 of that $292,000 is our contracted shoreboat services.
Hey, Matt, on the restroom maintenance, is that restroom maintenance from a public works standpoint, or restroom maintenance from the restroom contract?
That's from the, that's from the contract standpoint. There is a separate line in the budget. It's still from the contract, but we're responsible for the payment of paper towels, soap, and things of that nature, and so that is a separate line item within the budget. But that maintenance is what's being performed by our contractor.
I'm wondering, I know we talked about it briefly a couple of times throughout the last year or two, maybe, but looking at, had, if we had increased the contract at all to provide for additional services to avoid having additional maintenance, like repair work having to be done because of not having someone staffing the restroom and then having them get damaged when they're not being, like, watched? Is that something that we can still look at adjusting potentially? I'm not sure when the contract is up for that next.
You know, we are looking at that contract overall going forward.
Okay. Thank you. Can I, to Annie's question about the Falcon program, did we ever ask the Chamber or the Love Catalina or the Island Company to rejoin us in paying for those programs?
Not in the last 18 months. I don't know prior to that.
It may be something that's worthwhile to check in on and see if they would be willing to also partake in that cost. Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, I just noticed it says my screen sharing is paused, so I'm going to stop the share and start it.
It was a three-way split, I think, of which?
A long time ago, yes.
Yeah, when it first started, it was a three-way split. But I know it had changed in split and cost and everything else, too, so.
All right. I think the screen should be visible to the public. But again, I'll have all the slides published tomorrow morning. So I do apologize if they haven't been visible all this time, but it should be good right now. Okay, and then again, for internal services, we look at the same criteria and treat the harbor allocation similar to how we treat the general fund. So we're looking at, for the general admin staffing levels, because that impacts how much payroll is involved, budget levels, because that impacts how much AP is involved, things of that nature. Similar with insurance and vehicle maintenance. So you can see harbor operations has 16% of the city's overall internal service allocation, with the rest divided. So the next slide is kind of a summary breakdown of all the capital outlays in next year's budget. This budget also includes a vehicle replacement schedule in the capital improvement program for the harbor vessels. And so that is a new sheet that was added to this year's budget, so I encourage everyone to take a look at it in more detail. You can see net of grant funding, we do have $177,000 planned for vehicle replacement. Again, not all of that will necessarily be spent next year. We have a kind of a replacement schedule for that, but that's to make sure we're setting aside funds every year to fund the replacement of those. We did receive a grant of approximately $40,000 for the replacement of an engine. I forget which boat, but, and so that's why that's, that number is net of that $40,000 grant. Another big project that I don't know if we highlighted in the meeting last time is our Club Dock, Dinghy Dock pier replacement. So we are looking in the next fiscal year to replace the Club Dock Dinghy Dock pier. The plan is to have it prefabbed over town and then brought in and installed here. We are looking at a grant opportunity with Boating and Waterways to potentially have that grant funded. But it's a priority, as I understand it, even if we're unsuccessful in that grant, where we really need to replace it in the next fiscal year. So that's 120,000 in the budget.
I'm sorry, what dinghy dock is that?
It's the pier to go out to the, it's near the yacht club. I guess between the yacht club and, it's between the two clubs, yeah, excuse me. And so we're looking to replace that next year. The end float rehabilitation, we have 100,000. So this is a project we've kind of phased over the last few years, replacing the flotation drums and some of the structural work of the end float, the city's end float. So that's the float in between the end of the pier and the other end float. So maybe we'll have to work on a naming convention for that. So next year, we have kind of the last drum to be replaced in that, as well as we're looking to redo the decking on that. And so in the last few years, we've been spending 40,000 to 50,000, and that's really to replace the drums, as well as some of the structural repairs. And so the reason it's 100 in this year is we're looking to do the decking as well. Again, the green pier repairs, we replaced five pilings. But we're really trying to get the remainder of the pilings done in a more condensed time, just because the cost of bringing out the equipment is considerable and the time to bring out the equipment is considerable. So we're looking to replace, I believe, half of the remaining ones in that next year's budget. So you can see this year, it was 250,000, and we only were able to replace, I shouldn't say only, we were successfully, happily able to replace five. But for 450,000, we're looking to potentially be able to replace 15. So you can see doubling the price but tripling the amount of work getting done. Similarly, we're looking at maybe trying to take advantage of the timing of doing those piling repairs and look at the decking. But we're also looking at potential grant funding for that cost. The Cabrillo Mole Phase Two, the number there is what our spend would be net of grant funding. So we've currently secured about 15 million in grant funding, or 16 million in grant funding. 14 million of it is grants and 2 million of it is local match. And so right now, just kind of as a rough estimate, we have half of that spend in the next fiscal year. So a little over 8 million in actual cash out the door. But after factoring the grant money coming back, we're looking at a net spend of that 1.2 million. We'll have better numbers as we kind of get further along in the RFP process, but that's kind of our, right now, our best guess. Casino Way improvements, so this year we made major improvements to the Casino Way arch, and that 100,000 is to fund additional improvements along the Casino Way. Underground fuel tank, this is also kind of a priority project, just given the timing of not only the grant requirements, but the state permitting requirements. And so that's replacing our current underground fuel tank with one that's above ground. We do have grant funding for that project. So the total project's gonna be about 700,000 with 450,000 of that grant funded and the remainder funded by the city. And then there's other capital outlays making up that 376. And I could go to the budget document to go over those in detail.
Well, I'm just curious if any of that is the Casino Dock?
I believe there's 50,000 for engineering or additional permitting in next year's budget in that 376. But we can confirm.
So that's gonna take some time.
That'll take some time.
That whole project is gonna take some time, yeah, okay.
And Matt, just one question, the dinghy dock reminded me, several people, I don't know if this would be the time to ask, but several people have asked me if we could get more ladders at the main dinghy docks by the green pier.
More ladders? Like to get down to the beach?
No, to get off, there's like one ladder and everybody scrambles, all the dinghies scramble to go to get closer to the ladder.
That's something we could do, so. I don't think we have to wait till next year's budget. I think we can, I think we can figure something out there.
But if they're watching.
Put a rope. Save some money.
We're gonna have a warm summer. The water's gonna be nice. Everyone can swim to shore.
Yeah, exactly.
We can do something with that before the budget, so.
I don't know, several people.
So the next slide is the sewer fund. And so this one, just try to keep moving along. I've kind of combined all of them into one slide. So you can see we have 287 in salaries and benefits, and that's 1.9 full-time equivalent. So that's a portion of a number of public works crew's time goes into that fund there. Maintenance and operations of 501,000. The majority of that is our utilities, as well as our emergency maintenance account. The contract services is what makes up about half of the harbors, or the, excuse me, the sewers operating budget. And that's our contract for the wastewater treatment plant, as well as, it's grouped with contract services, but I probably should look to move it to maintenance and operation. The H2S control, that's the odor control, if you will. And so that's the purchase of the chemicals to help with that odor control is that 125,000. And then again, a portion of that Falcon contract, 53,000, is included in the contract services. Internal services, the sewer fund pays 9% of the city's overall internal service charges. You can see we have a capital outlays of 1.3 million. The sewer fund has its own kind of CIP schedule that breaks down projects. And we've kind of gone kind of as a priority-as-needed basis for that. But that's how much we've, if we look at what we haven't spent in the last couple of years, kind of what it's built up over the last three years, that would be available to spend for the harbor fund on capital outlays. So if there are any specific projects, we would be coming those, bringing those to council separately and presenting what those would be. And so that's why you see that draw in fund balance. It's really because the last two years, we haven't spent as much in capital outlays in the harbor fund. And so that's kind of rolling over those unspent balances, is why you see the draw in the current budget. Similar with the saltwater fund, we charge 1.4 full-time equivalent public works time. So I think both those funds are getting a good deal. You know, I don't think we're overcharging them. And again, this also drives into the rates that we have to charge to cover those services. And so I think it is important to highlight that, you know, we're not, you know, adding people's time. The goal is to accurately and fairly show what the time is, but we're not adding time here to increase rates. We're really trying to make sure we're keeping a close eye on the sewer and saltwater operating costs, because that is directly relates to what we have to then charge for those services. So you can see contract services is primarily the wastewater treatment fund. We do have an internal, inter-fund loan. So a number of years ago, I believe in 2019, the general fund loaned the sewer fund and the saltwater fund, because those funds did not have any fund balance available, and there were some needed capital projects in those funds. I believe it was 100,000 in the saltwater fund, and so that's over a five-year period, 20,000 a year paying back the general fund. Capital outlays, similar to the harbor or the sewer fund, that's a balance that reflects a couple of years of unspent capital outlays for a net draw on the fund balance of 150,000. So that's really last year's unspent CIP being rolled forward. So then solid waste fund, again, similar to the general, or similar to the sewer and saltwater, we really try to keep a close eye on the operating expenditures, because this is what drives the rates to the property owners. Salaries and benefits, we do charge .2 FTEs, and that's the code enforcement officers' time for their role on the enforcement side of the green bag program. Maintenance and operations of the 25,000, 15,000 is rent. So we do pay rent for some of the locations of the dumpsters that are available to the businesses. You can see the vast majority is the contract services. So of the 2.2 million in contract services, about 2 million is our contract with CRNR. And 125,000 has to do with hazardous waste collection charges, costs. And the solid waste fund does pay 5% of the overall internal service funds. And that's just general admin and insurance. They don't pay anything for vehicle maintenance. So you can see there's two capital outlays. One's a contribution to the city's landfill closure trust, and the other is 500,000. And that has to do with the permitting for landfill expansion. And so at the next council meeting, we'll be bringing forward more specifics on that project.
Yeah, a half a million dollars for a permit?
I mean, it's.
I mean, that is, that's insanity. Who is raping us?
Well, that's not the whole cost, probably.
Well, I know, but I mean, so what does that give us?
It's a portion of the cost of the permit.
Just for a permit?
It's gonna be the environmental studies, the environmental studies for this is gonna be massive, plus an EIR.
And who do we, and what kind of agency does the environmental studies? Do we have to get a private consultant or is it the government?
Yes.
That's what we're bringing in two weeks.
Yeah, okay, but this is insanity. Okay, good job. Keep going back.
So Avalon Transit, so we do collect or keep 100% of the Fairbox revenues. So our fixed route, we have estimated 60,000 in revenues. And so I think I broke that down at two bucks a ride, 365 days a year. That's about 80 riders a day. And dial a ride, 20,000, so I think I had that broken down to 30 or so riders a day. We do charge a quarter of an admin analyst's time to the transit fund. And so that's what that 35,000 in salaries and benefits reflects. Maintenance and operations is primarily our Caltip insurance. So we do have to get separate insurance for transit operations. And so it is not charged an internal service charge for general liability insurance, because it has a separate insurance. You can see our TC contract, I put an asterisk by that, because the vast majority of the contracts covered by our local return funds, which are grouped in that Fund 122. This is kind of a, it's kind of a unique fund where the activity is split between two different funds. But you can see internal service funds is, or internal service charges is 228,000, and that's 4.8% of the city's overall admin and other internal service costs. And so the amount of transit activity that's not covered by the Fairbox revenue and not covered by the local return funds, that gets subsidized by the general fund as part of those transfers out of the general fund. And so we have, right now in the budget, an estimate of 330,000, and that's what the general fund is subsidizing for those transit.
That's nuts. Well, let's hopefully, with revision, we'll be able to get those, get those revenues up, because that's insanity. I mean, it's, it doesn't work. It's not working well, I guess, is what that's telling us.
And it's definitely something that's on our agenda for next year. Our, I believe our contract with TC is up in the next fiscal year. And so we'll be going out to RFP, I believe, in the next couple of months for that operation. So there'll be plenty of opportunity to dive into this one in more detail.
Yeah.
Lastly, we have the internal service fund budgets. So again, the three internal service funds are general admin, insurance, and vehicle maintenance. Again, I didn't provide the breakdown or the comparison of what we had last time, but there's been very little change, with a couple of exceptions that I'll call out when we get to them. So looking at staffing, 58.2% of the expenditures in there relate to salaries or wages and overtime, with the remainder benefits. Why it can vary from 65 to 58, things like health insurance for a family versus health insurance for an individual. If we have one department that has more individuals and less family plans, believe it or not, it can make a pretty significant difference. Another thing just to call out is we have 4.6 finance FTEs and 7.5 admin FTEs. So we have five people on my finance team, but a portion of my time and a portion of one of my account technician's time is charged to the successor agency, so that's one of those other funds that rolls into the general fund. And that's for managing the successor agency, and so that's how we have 4.6 FTEs. So the vast majority of my time and my department's time hits this account. Similar with the admin, a portion of the city manager and assistant city manager is charged to housing, as well as also to the successor agency. But again, the vast majority of their department's time is charged to this fund. So with maintenance and operations, and general admin in total, there's 413,000 in maintenance and operations. For elected, right now in the budget, I have 4,000 per elected official. That's considerably higher than kind of what we've seen in the actuals. I'd say year-to-date, it's probably closer to 2,000 per council member, actually maybe even a little less than that. But I do have 4,000 for each council member, plus 4,000 for the treasurer position in the budget. Legal, that's travel costs for our city attorney. Again, we haven't been anywhere near that number, but that was kind of our pre-COVID number that we'd used, so I put that as a safe number. Admin of 89,000. Some of the major ones that come out of there are election expense. So we have 25,000 for election expense. We'll have an election in the next fiscal year. 25,000 for membership dues. That includes League of California Cities, Gateway Cog, National League of Cities. So there's a number of. So then in finance, out of that 65,000, most of that relates to our monthly accounting software subscription, which is in the budget for 50,000. So that's our ERP system and our cashiering system. The 231,000 for general government, half of that's utilities. Then that also includes our leases for our copy and mail machines, office supplies, as well as kind of general maintenance of the city hall premises. Then for the garage, or I guess for insurance, not to skip insurance, 700,037. That's primarily our CIRR, general liability and property insurance. And then the 190,000 for the garage is 75,000 in rent and 100,000 in parts and supplies.
And we don't have any money in here for that whole garage thing for next year?
So we do in the budget, and that, I believe we have 40,000 in our general fund. It just didn't rise to an amount to where I called it out separately. It's included in that other number. But that would be to start looking at the design permitting to potentially build a new facility for our public works crew. And I think it could be a very beneficial project, especially considering the savings we could see in rent if we were able to consolidate our garage and our public works to the one site that we own. That would save 75,000 a year, and so. You know, while that one might not have the grant funding opportunities, it does have a revenue source and the potential savings. And so it is in the, it is in the works, but we're probably still two years out from seeing a construction.
Well, I do like the kitchen that was placed in there. Rico showed me the picture of how they put the sink and made that, so at least the little kitchen area looks kind of nice right now.
You know where they found that kitchen? They took it out of the finance office.
And put it up there and it looks great.
Which is, which is great, so we'll have a new workstation in my department, so I'm happy for that. So with contract services and general admin, that's 590,000. 155,000 of that's LEO, and that's our kind of primary account with our city attorney. For finance, we have 80,000. The finance one, that includes our ambulance billing contract, our, some financial forecasting software contracts we have, as well as our contract for payroll services. The 355,000 in general government includes 60,000 for Townsend. So I tried not to name the names, but the general legislative affairs and grant writings are Townsend contract. 15,000 for property tax consulting and sales tax consulting, so that's HDL. Our IT consulting and the various subscriptions related to IT is 160,000. So the contract with our contractor is 80,000, but we have a number of subscriptions for antivirus. I could get you the detailed list he breaks down, but there's no shortage of IT subscriptions. That's included in that 160. And then 90,000 is for our financial statement audit, as well as our vacation rental auditing software and other audit support softwares that I have.
I have a question. Do we know, for example, ambulance runs, or just different things we do? Do we know how much we aren't collecting, for example, for ambulance? Or it could just be anything, or just the tickets that? Or, or just the tickets that are outstanding that code gives? And do we, and then what do, what do we do to kind of collect that? Or is it, or do we just let them?
So for the, the ambulance billing, we do contract with Whitman and they're kind of the, the first level on our billing side. So they'll work with the insurance providers if there's insurance related to the collection. And if, and there is a formal process they have, if they don't receive payment, we do work then with a, a collection agency, or we have the ability to at least work with a collection agency. So we have a real formal process for, at least on the ambulance billing side. We, we could, but we historically haven't used the, the collection agency for ticketing services. And it's more just the, the cost versus, the cost of the service versus the amount of tickets we have outstanding. I think it's kind of been the motivator behind. But I, I can tell you Chief looks very closely at the, the citation process. And I know Devin's been working on the, the amnesty program. And so I'm not saying it couldn't get more attention, but it, we have been, I think, more aggressive in, in looking at those revenues.
Or I didn't know if by the time you've got this outfit that does all of the legwork and all of the stuff, if there's really any money in it for us, or they end up with the majority of the money.
I, I, I don't think that's the case, especially for ambulance billing. We do get a considerable percentage of that back to us. And it's, it's a great value for us because there's a lot of rules that are involved with billing insurance providers. And then there's expertise they have that, that we don't necessarily have in-house.
No, oh, no. Fine.
I was actually noticing the ambulance money that has been brought in just this past year and what it's budgeted for seems significantly higher than it also has been, to the point where it's literally that, that dollar value was only a couple hundred thousand under the admissions tax. Which is surprising to me, but also.
Our ambulance fees, we bring in about 500,000 a year. I mean, granted, our fire department costs about 3 million a year, so it's not like it's, you know. But our ad tax fees are 700,000. So it is, and that's another one where, you know, we did see a considerable drop in COVID. But it's, I don't want to say I'm happy to see it rebound, but it's, it's definitely rebounded pre-COVID. And then lastly, with the insurance, 190,000. That's for some of the smaller claim settlements, as well as for litigation costs. So again, this is kind of a summary then of the, the capital outlays for the internal service funds in the budget for next year. We have 125,000 for AV system upgrades. We're currently working with, we're, we're pricing out a number of different options. So we'll, we'll see where that number lands. And a lot of times it's, that's kind of if, if we're getting everything or asking for everything, but we're still kind of evaluating. But it, it is a priority for us. And then the MFA is multi-factor authentication. This one's a, really an insurance requirement for us from a cyber standpoint. And, and so that's a definite priority project for us. And then lastly, also for the first time this year, so I encourage everyone to look in the, the capital, the capital improvement program. We do have a vehicle replacement schedule for the, the public works vehicles that we've budgeted out of the vehicle maintenance fund. And so we do have 205,000 in the budget for the replacement of those vehicles. So we wouldn't necessarily see all 200,000 spent in the next year, but it does have us setting aside dedicated monies for, for future vehicle purchases. And hopefully, once we can get our fleet more up to date, we can see that number maybe stabilize a bit. So we're, might be playing catch-up though for a couple of years. So that is the end of the presentation. Again, there's still opportunity to make revisions to the budget. If something comes up between now and when we present it, you know, we're happy to incorporate those changes at the, before the June 20th meeting. My plan is tomorrow to have the budget, as well as all the presentations, on the finance page website. I wanted to have council the opportunity to look at it first before I put it on blast. But if there's any questions, I'm happy to talk also after this meeting. You know, if there's any updates or things you'd like to see incorporated, or, or questions in general.
We good? Thank you, Matt. That was a lot of information. Okay. Well, here we go on the consent calendar.
Item one, approval for the minutes for May 16th, 2023, regular council meeting. Item two, approved total expenditures for May 8th, 2023 through May 26th, 2023, totaling $2,695,81. Item three.
Item three is the findings to continue to meet remotely.
Thank you.
Thank you for abbreviating that.
Item four, the cooperation agreement for continued participation in Los Angeles Urban County CDBG grant program. In addition to this, where it was omitted from the original agenda, we're asking council to adopt a resolution. So we'd like to authorize the city manager to execute the cooperation agreement with LA County Development Authority for a three-year term, beginning July 1st, 23 through June 30th, 2027, and adopt a resolution. Item five is a resolution adopting the list of projects for the annual SV1 allocation for fiscal year '23 through '24, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017.
Okay. On items one through five, do we have a motion or are we gonna pull any of those?
I'm moved to approve items one through five.
All set. Move the session. Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavell?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Potemponse?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall.
Another question. Can we ever go back to using our little button thing?
Not until you stop making the findings under 361. So basically, basically in January, unless you want to stop making those findings. In January, you can go back to pressing buttons.
Okay. This is just so cute. Isn't it so antique looking? Okay, public hearing.
You, you didn't vote.
No, we didn't vote.
You didn't vote.
Oh my God, so excited about trying to press the button again. Okay, let's call for the vote.
We did, but.
But you have to vote.
Oh, and I didn't vote. Oh, I got excited.
You have to do a roll call.
Should I say no? Yes. Thank you. Oh gosh. Okay, kids.
Item six, public, or public hearing, item six, fiscal year '23, '24 miscellaneous fee schedule. Your presentation regarding the miscellaneous fee schedule. Open the public hearing to hear public comments. Close the public hearing. If consensus, adopt the fee schedule as proposed.
Okay. So let's open the public hearing. Any comments on our fee schedule?
I've received no comments.
Anybody in the audience? Going once, going twice? We're gonna close. Close it.
First, I think you have to hear the presentation.
Yeah, we have to hear it.
Oh.
I'll make it easy though.
I have done with numbers.
Painful as it might be.
I don't have a formal presentation prepared, but I do have the fee schedule brought up. You know, again, this has been at the city front counter for review. But if there are any questions, we made a few changes to formatting. Most of the fees went up by CPI based on April 23, so that's 3.8%. There are a couple of fees that we changed based on kind of the actual, looking more detail into the actual costs that were highlighted in the staff report. And another major change is we changed the structure within the recreation department, which previously had five categories of different discounts for the rental of different parks, facilities, that we consolidated to three to really simplify the process for the public, as well as city staff. Because we got a lot of confusion as to whether someone qualified for group four, group three, or group five. And so we tried to simplify it in this fee schedule. And so that's in the facility rentals section. But again, I don't, I don't have a formal presentation unless there's questions. I'm happy to answer on any of the fees in particular. Again, the majority, so all of the nightly mooring rates would have gone up by 3.8%, but there's no change to the, the buy two, get five, the buy three, get four. No changes there.
Matt, on the use of facilities, the only one that I didn't see on it that we talked about previously, potentially adding was the end of the pier, especially in the off-season. But I didn't know if it was under maybe a different section and I just missed it, or if it hadn't been added or discussed yet in terms of use and/or not wanting to use it. The end of the pier, to do the pier like a private party, pier party?
I did not add it. I could circle back with recreation and if we, if we have to do an amendment at some time in the year, we can, we can add it then.
Okay. If we could, that would be awesome.
Yep.
Remember, we used to have dances at the Moho too.
Yeah. I mean, I figure also with the return of, with the building of the new Cabrillo Mall to be named to the different date structure.
While you have this facilities up here right now, well, don't scroll up, just scroll down. I don't like it. I, I don't like that we're, we're upping the charge of kids park, the basketball court, the skate park. These are places that are primarily rented by locals for little kids' stuff. And we all know that we work, you know, three, four jobs. I don't see why we're penalizing locals to rent. There's, there's nowhere, where do you have a little kid's birthday party, you know, any of these places? And you're going from 30 bucks to 85 dollars? That's significant.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, the.
You need to look at what the, what the.
So we did, we did raise it from 29 to 30 dollars, but how, we've always provided a discount to Avalon residents. And so the, the three groupings are any city sponsor or cosponsor.
Pardon me.
Sorry.
But we appreciate your enthusiasm.
Thank you.
It, it did go up from 29 dollars to 30.
There's a different rate for.
We can, we can look at maybe not raising it.
Okay, I got you. Thank you. Sorry. But I was protecting you all. If anybody's still watching this meeting, I was protecting you all.
Did you have a couple of comments? I have a couple.
That, that was my main one on the green pier. Everything else was going pretty solid, I thought.
Okay. The bicycle licenses, I believe we need to put e-bikes on there as well. And I think there should be, and it should be a little more expensive than, than the regular bicycle license. But I, the bummer is that, no, it's, yeah, and I feel bad for code. But code and law enforcement could actually help in that to make sure, you know, those are registered. And I just saw another hall out there that, I mean, by the time they get to hear their absolute crap, I can't believe people can just dispose of bikes so much. But we have to dispose of them. We're not able to sell them, from what is my understanding. So I don't know. I think, I don't know that we have to increase the bike license fee, but I'd like to include e-bikes on there and see what we can do for better enforcement if they don't. So if they don't have a license, there's a, there's a penalty to that. So, or if we're not gonna do it, just get rid of it altogether. I mean, I think it needs to be one or the other, either we don't, we don't have you do that and there's no penalty, or.
Does the license include the cost to dispose of the bikes?
Probably not. You got, how, well, it'd be curious to see how many bike licenses we have.
We do have a daily storage of $5 charge for bicycles, but usually when we claim them, they're, they're not reclaimed.
Yeah, it's junk and they don't have licenses on them to begin with.
So the, the two bicycle ones, and maybe we can look to reorganize. One is in the administrative permit, so that's on the first section, on page three of the PDF. And then the bike storage falls under fines, code enforcement section on the, on the next page.
So this one and then this one. So this is like page two or something?
And I, I do think our participation is fairly low. And so maybe what step one should be is just more of a public outreach on getting more bicycles licensed. I know in talking to Miguel, there's a lot of value if your bike ends up missing to have it licensed and registered. And so maybe highlighting some of those success stories he's had would encourage more people to, to rent them, or license them, excuse me. And then it's more of a question for Scott. Do we need to call out e-bikes specifically on the piece?
I'm, I'm looking at where, where, what page is that on?
So it's gonna be on page three, bicycle license?
I don't think so. If it just says bicycle license, I think we can interpret that to mean.
E-bikes. So that's, that's section one, general admin.
It'd be nice if they rode them like bicycles.
The other thing is, I really appreciate the fact on page two, we have a noise violation. The second offense is $500, and the third is $1,000. So that's vehicle noise as well as public noise, correct? And if so, we're missing out, especially when it comes to vehicles, because we have a heck of a lot of them.
So this one's on page four, section two, code enforcement.
Well, I'm on page two.
Alright, sorry, page two. Page two, it's page four of the PDF, but that's, that's counting the cover page.
So I'm, I'm just, the noise is, the noise is unbearable with golf carts and whatever. And we really need law enforcement to get involved because our code guys can't get them. And then my question is, do we have the next step? Once they're noisy, where are we unable to prove that or move forward?
For the, for the purpose of the fee schedule, I believe we got the fees based on the new noise ordinance, which I think was more targeted to amplified music. So I'm not sure that the intent of that fee was related to, to vehicle noise.
Those noise violations are out of the code from last October that we passed.
Yeah.
That's the 500 and 1,000.
Wait, so you're saying that doesn't cover vehicles?
That does not cover vehicles.
So how do we cover vehicle noise? I thought we had something.
There may be in the ordinance. I don't have it in front of me, but there may be a provision in the ordinance. And remember, we also have a administrative, a general administrative citation provision in chapter one of the municipal code that provides that if you violate the code, we can fine you like 100, 200, 300 dollars per, per offense. It's a general thing. If it's not specifically listed, then we go to the administrative citation, which is something that we can do civilly. So we can just issue a, a, a ticket for those.
I mean, you know, I, I'm sorry, but I guess I'm, people that have vehicles on the mainland do not treat them like they do their golf carts here. People aren't maintaining, because you, you couldn't drive down the street if your vehicles were in the shape that some of these golf carts are in. But when they're going down the street and the transmission's gonna fall out at any moment, they're, I mean, you live where you live. And, and I don't know what the answer is, but I don't, we have to put some teeth into something besides buy, get, get a golf cart by January, you know, electric one by then. It's just, because I don't, I don't think this is gonna clean itself up unless we actually come up with some teeth.
Several years ago, didn't we do the, they had to be, and then, so whatever happened with that?
It was so, well, I recall, it was so labor-intensive. Unless we set it up for a certain time and made them all do that, because then it was just kind of willy-nilly. You bring it in, you bring it in. So we had two people out there and it was, it was a lot of labor.
Yeah, it was Jordan did it for, I think, two months straight. That's all, that's all he did. Now he's back next week, so, you know.
But, but unless we cite them for their noise.
He's only here for two days, though, so that's pretty rough.
But like how, but, but how, I mean, we have to come up with a system of how to do that. We have to alert the people that over this, you know, we have to.
The way it was done in the past is you could not get your license. You could not get your permit unless it passed the noise test. And so, so we had the, we had like a little noise gun there, and then they had to fix it. And if not, you didn't get your permit.
But don't we have, so the only thing that any code or anybody or, or the law enforcement is able to do is if it's noise outside, not vehicle noise?
I, I think there's, it's, I think in the municipal code.
So if that's the case.
Because this is.
But it's not, but it's not in, it's not part of the fee.
This is not, yeah, this is separate from the municipal code. This is like in the.
But it will be, because then if they're noisy, we can find them if we're not fixing their noise, or whatever other.
That would be, but that would all be through the municipal code, outside.
Right. Yeah, because what this is often in your municipal code, it says that you will be charged a fee established by the city council. This is what this is, but the municipal code has a number of instances where we have actually said.
Yeah, we, we need to do something. Okay.
50 for the first, 75.
So, these are $50 for the first, $75 for the second, and 150.
So for vehicles?
For vehicle, vehicle noise.
Okay, so now we need is enforcement, and the only people that can enforce it is law enforcement, because it's a moving violation.
We can do an administrative citation.
But it's a moving violation and only they can stop them. Code enforcement can't stop them.
Well, actually, no, it would be a noise violation, we just have to be able to document that it's noise.
Right.
And we had a noise gun. We had a sound gun.
No, I know once we, once they get written up, but the only person that can say to them, "Your vehicle is noisy," is law enforcement, because they're the only ones that can write it.
No, code enforcement can write...
Code enforcement can't stop moving vehicles.
It's not a moving violation, but I understand what you're saying, is the vehicle would be in motion because it's...
That's when you're going to hear it. Now, I, so if I could say this one vehicle, how noisy it is, and I could say, "Code, can you write it up?" And then we take them to the sound machine, but I don't, you know, I mean, we know some that are totally outrageous, that would be easy to nab, but can I actually do that and say, "This is the one over, send code to them, and so we've gotten complaints that this is loud," and then we run it through the machine?
Do we used to do that before we gave them their SARS program?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that one time.
It was supposed to be every three-year. The original intent was that it was going to be a three-year program, so every three years you'd have to go through noise review to meet the need to be able to do that. But I feel like it also landed in the COVID times potentially when the three-year was up.
I don't know. I think we kind of abandoned the idea even before, but...
I didn't know.
We could. I mean, yeah.
Or we should.
We should.
We should really look at it, see if it'd be part of the licensing, registration process.
And I totally understand your frustration with all of this, but this isn't what we're discussing.
I know.
It's just, we just need to bring it back and actually have that discussion.
Okay. Well, I think we kind of did, and I think we're going to work on it.
Can we still note that, though, to bring it back?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, I appreciate that, Michael, but I saw noise, and I got excited about the noise.
I know, I...
Okay.
Were film permits listed in here, Matt? I couldn't...
Yes, and the film permit is on section one, page one, I believe, or page three of the PDF. The application fee did go up by more than CPI on that one. I think that was one that was called out in the staff report. It's my understanding there's considerable amount of admin's time goes into reviewing each application, including involving the fire department. So I can show you the breakdown of hours estimated, that creates that 150. But that was one of the fees that did go up by more than CPI.
I saw it in the staff report, but I just wasn't seeing it on the, where is it on the list?
It is section one, general admin, about middle of the page.
Film location permits?
Film location permits.
On this thing, it's page one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Gotcha. Oh, it's a heading, sorry. I was looking for it under the smaller print. Thank you.
And, I don't know, I...
Go ahead, Mary.
I love outdoor dining. I think it's fabulous. So the shoulder season, it stays, stays the same, but in the summertime, it almost doubles, goes from 1,600 to 2,400. I'm, so are we ultimately trying to discourage people from putting their tables out there? Why, why is that so exponentially high?
But you know what? They are also charging $5 a chair when you go to sit down.
Who is?
So they're making the run, you flip those tables, those chairs, two or three times in an evening, you got $15 a chair, times so many chairs, times 30 days. I think our fees are reasonable.
The restaurant is charging $5 to sit there?
Yes.
And just to let you know, what we did on, the idea of that was that you pay $2,400 for the full month rather than the per day, but because of the weather in June, we've agreed this June to go back to the per day charge to see how it goes, so.
Okay. And the amount, number of chairs was?
I think it ended up at, was it 24?
24 chairs?
Yeah, I want to, I can't remember the number.
24 chairs, yeah. 32?
32.
Oh, okay.
I can remember it was seven or eight, but yeah.
All righty.
I think the goal also was to try to offset if there were concerns or complaints about removing beach space from people who were on the beach to be able to have that.
Oh, I know, I heard that.
Well, and fork, then it also, sometime, I think they, for the most part, they do a good job of cleaning up, but you'll still find forks and straws and things like that on the beach, and then it's our responsibility to clean up the beach, so. And something else came, something else came to mind. Dang it, don't leave us, don't leave it hanging. Okay, and then I had a question. What is the fine, what is the outdoor restaurant review fine? What is that? What do they have to review?
They get fined for the stuff?
What?
They get fined for trash and everything else?
I don't know. Is that what that means?
Where are you, which?
I'm in the fines section on page two. It's underneath, like fats, oils, and grease.
Oh, here we go.
Section two, code enforcement.
Outdoor restaurant review.
No, that's the fats, oils, and grease, that's the fog program.
No, I know, but underneath that, under fines, it says outdoor restaurant review. I'm like, what the heck are you reviewing? What is that?
The second one under fines.
Oh.
I mean, I don't care, I was just curious.
I would have to check with code, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. All right, no worries.
And just real quickly for our listening audience, the increase in our fees for licenses, just so that they kind of hear that.
So, based on feedback from council, we did look at the amount of staff time that goes into managing the vehicle license permit, the sticker program, if you will. And we did increase the fee and the proposed fee schedule from $37 per vehicle to $50 per vehicle. So that's another one of those that did not increase by CPI, but by more than the CPI. And so we're looking at the administrative time as well as code enforcement's time on the stickers and looking at the number of vehicles that are in the program and coming up with a per-vehicle cost.
The minimal vehicle cost pursuant to the potential new legislation.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay. And we're having a full-size vehicle pay the same amount as an auto end?
And the rationale is from an administrative standpoint, it's the same amount of work we put in for...
And I really like how you streamlined the, the price for people to participate in sports. Just make it into 35 bucks. I think that's great.
And there's been times where we've been able to discount that based on donations and things like that. Or we've kind of, I believe a lot of the programs this year, we've charged 20 bucks, but we haven't maybe necessarily bought the same level of uniform or provided the same level. So we can always go down from that number, but that kind of sets it at a level to kind of at least cover the new uniforms. So the, kind of the goal with those rec fees is to add a minimum cover with the actual kind of out-of-pocket cost for the balls and the uniforms and the supplies and things of that nature.
Right. Right, because soccer went from 85 to 35. I'm curious to see if there are going to be a lot more soccer players now.
Yeah.
Did the hearings go up because of staffing as well?
The hearings, I believe, went up by CPI, 3....
$3 here, $3 there.
That, let me, as far as say that, I did sit down with code and went over.
It's not much, but...
Yeah, it just was a CPI increase, it looks like. So it was a 3.8% and just rounded to the nearest dollar.
Sort of a question on oversight. If I have a bulldozer, do I have a, do I have a license on that? DMV issue a license on those big giant rigs?
Registration.
I don't know. Is there a registration on construction rigs? Okay, and those are oversized oversights. And I know we talked about maybe looking into it more, but I mean, when those suckers go down the road...
So, again, these are the fees. The intent of the fees really to cover the administrative cost of it, not the road wear and tear, per se. I think that would more fall under an assessment, and there's different. And so it's something we could explore, but just our current license wasn't really designed, our current fee wasn't really designed to capture wear and tear on roads, and so that would be another project. And we can pursue that, but it really didn't fit within the existing license or the existing fee.
I've mentioned that before. My daughter's in Texas, and all those big things, they paid, they paid big money to be able to put them on those roads. So I think we were missing out by not doing some kind of assessment on them. But, anyway, okay. I have no more questions or comments.
I'm done.
Okay, well, we'll...
We need to close the hearing.
I already did. I closed it earlier, and then we've been talking since.
Okay. Are there any other comments?
I've received none.
Is there a consensus? If there's a consensus, adopt the fee schedule as proposed.
I make a motion to adopt the fee schedule as proposed.
I'll second.
And are we proposing it with the change that we're going to add, the end of the pier rental fee?
No.
No.
You can't add that because it's not in the schedule.
I didn't have to be added at a later point and brought back for...
I didn't know if we're going to renotice this one. I just want to make sure. Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember LaVell?
Aye.
Councilmember Schicklin?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ponse?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
All ayes.
Okay, item number seven of public hearing regarding resolutions adopting the reports proposing to have sewer, saltwater, and solid waste collection service and grease collection service charges collected on property tax roll for 23, 24. Directing the city clerk to file a said report with the auditor controller to place said charges on the tax roll.
It's Matt again.
Again, I don't have a presentation for this one. Sewer, saltwater, sewers being proposed to increase by 3.5%, and that was as outlined in the cost of service study. Saltwater is being increased by 2.5%, and that was again as outlined in the cost of service study. And then solid waste, we're proposing an increase of 7.5%. And so the fee study originally had two years of 19.5% increases followed by an 11.5%. The first year, we did increase it by 19.5%. Last year, we increased it by 11.5%, and this year, we're proposing an increase of 7.5%. And just due to the timing of some major expenditures and the timing of, in this year's budget, we also did include $200,000 subsidizing solid waste from the general fund. We're able to kind of stretch out those rate increases that were in the study, so instead of having kind of the steep increases the first two years, we're able to, or our intent is to try to spread it out. So again, we do have solid waste rates increasing by 7.5%, and a lot of that's driven by the closure, post-closure costs, as well as the cost to fund the landfill expansion, and then also the contract service increase for 1383 compliance, and so...
And the reason we put it on the county rules instead of doing it ourself is because?
It is a huge savings as far as staff time and even cost. So adding it on the property tax assessment, the county handles the mailings that go in, the county handles the collections. We have a very high collection percentage because everyone generally pays their property tax when it comes in. If we weren't to go through this, I believe we spent 25 cents a, an assessment. I mean, that postage would, you know, not even cover that. So, you know, it's a tremendous value, not only in dollars, but also in staff time. And I think the biggest thing is also on the collection side, is we have very high collection percentage because we go through this route, and that's a huge benefit to us that we do have a high collection percentage.
So that's the reason, Mary.
And, okay, thank you. And then it doesn't, it doesn't affect the homeowner in any way except that we're raising it, but...
Well, I mean, it affects the homeowner in that we're raising it, but the process is the same for them. It just changes the dollar amount that's on their property tax bill. I mean, I think there is an education component in that it's a fee for a service, but it's on a tax bill, and so a lot of times there's a perception that, hey, why are my taxes going up by so much? And it's not the tax that's going up, it's the fee for service that we're putting on the bill. And so maybe there's an education component, because I know I get that comment a lot, not a lot, but occasionally someone will talk to me about their property tax going up, and it's not a tax, it's an assessment or a service charge.
And if you recall, we did a service study fee five years, no, three, three years ago that set the maximum for five years. So again, this wouldn't fall under the new legislation because it was done before 2022, but set the maximum rate for five years, and we're actually recommending assessing less than authorized under the study.
The other part that I remind homeowners about, too, is that it's 12 months' worth of payments.
I didn't open it, did I?
But it feels a lot because it's a long charge.
Okay. Well, now that we have that background information, I'd like to open the public hearing. Are there any comments from the public?
I've received no comments.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Recommended action?
Do we need to take all the resolutions at the same time?
You can. Yes, you can.
Okay. So I'd like to move to adopt the four resolutions, adopting the reports of the charges.
Your motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
You can get open. Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember LaVell?
Aye.
Councilmember Schicklin?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ponse?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
All ayes.
Okay. Item number eight.
Item number eight is TD Article 8 hearing. Just open the public hearing, accept comments from the public, and close the public hearing regarding the MTA Transportation Trust Authority.
Okay. Open the public hearing. Any comments?
I've received no comments.
Okay. Close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
And I remember, no, we don't have any, no resolution on that, it's just a public hearing, open the public hearing.
Oh, just open and close it.
I like that, Joe. That's nice.
Hold the public hearing.
And under general business, we will be pulling item nine from the agenda.
At the request of the applicant.
The request of the applicant. Is there anything else? Be sure to get your Tony Zeiler t-shirts. And, tonight, Tony, meeting adjourned. And Christine Guerrero, thank you for coming and hanging in with us.